All right. Good morning, everybody. If I can get everybody to take their seats, please. We're going to get started here. All right. Good morning and welcome to the October 10th meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. I'm going to call the meeting to order. At this time, I would ask, Mr. Lake, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marsha Burke Biggar, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Von Hartung.
Here.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager John Slaughter.
Present.
Assistant District Attorney Paul Lipparelli.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we break into public comment, item three, I'd like to take a brief moment.
Thank you. Good.
It has been a couple of very tumultuous weeks in our country, in our state, and locally here in our community. We've had a major, the largest mass shooting has occurred in our state in Las Vegas to our county to the south, our sister county, Clark County. We lost 59 amazing lives that day. It was very troubling to us and to the country as a whole. We lost a major patriarch this week to, that has been a major patriarch for the city of Reno and Washoe County for many, many years, Mr. Don Carano. We lost a close, dear friend of mine and a member of this, of our Washoe County family and a member, a friend to many commissioners. And our Washoe County District Court Chief Judge, Patrick Flanagan, passed away. We also lost, you know, our RPD Chief Roberts, Chief Robert Bradshaw, as well. Lots of loss in this, over the last couple of weeks. And it's been very tragic and very troubling for a lot of us here, not only in the Washoe County family, but throughout our region. And as we continue to grieve and mourn in the loss of these individuals, we ask for, you know, hope and we believe that we will recover and hope and pray that, you know, we'll find peace and recover from this and it's a better community and a better state. So at this time, what I'd do, I'd like to ask for, that we all hold a moment of silence and memorance of these individuals we lost over the last couple of weeks. Thank you, everybody. All right. Without further ado, Mr. Manager, we are on to item three, public comment.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item is limited to three minutes per person, may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. And comments, please, are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you. I have quite a few individuals signed in this morning. So what I would like, for those of you who are new to the process, I will call both, I will call your name and then the name following. If I could have you queue up just down here in the front row. That way, we can move through this as quickly or as, not as quickly, but as efficiently as possible. First, I have Mr. Ray Lake and then followed by Ms. Tammy Holt Still. Good morning, Mr. Lake.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Ray Lake. I am the Chairman of the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board. We held a meeting last night and there were several items missing from the agenda that we have had in the past. A notable one was the Sheriff Department. They have always, I can't say always, they have often presented to us and had a deputy in attendance at our meetings. In August, Lieutenant Bloom showed up for the regularly scheduled meeting at the community center. That one meeting was canceled and he wasn't notified. He showed up at the special meeting two weeks later and was not on the agenda. So he was allowed to speak under public comment, but we couldn't really engage with him. Also missing was Chief Moore of the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection Department, Mike Dickens from the Sted Airport Authority, forget the name. And we were scheduled to have the Department of Transportation present to us. And I actually found out about that from ANDOT. They approached me and said, hey, we're coming to talk to you guys in October. Well, that was not on the agenda. And when I spoke to those folks on Monday morning, the Director and Deputy Director were not aware that they had been canceled. I had notified some of the people that I know, so they weren't expecting to be there. We have always had these folks show up at our meetings and the folks in the North Valleys are happy to see them when they do show up. The minutes of the meeting last night will show that we had 87 people signed in. I estimated at closer to 100. There were quite a few who didn't sign in. We had, all of the chairs were filled and there were 31 people standing around the sides. So the people in the North Valleys are very engaged. They want, they want these items on the agenda and they want to keep their cab. And I hope that this board will recognize that and quit playing games with our agenda. So, that said, also, both of the projects that we were scheduled to hear were canceled last night. However, we held a meeting anyway and quite a few people made comments. One of the developer was actually there, although he didn't present his project. And it was actually a very good meeting. Everybody was polite and well behaved. And we need to do that every month. We need consistency. And, and you folks are the ones to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Next, I have Ms. Tammy Holt Still, followed by Ms. Debbie Phillips.
And for the record, Ms. Holt Still provided a handout, which I'll distribute to the Board.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tammy Holt Still, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee and still here. The winter, or the water is still there. I'm still here and we, as a committee, are still here. We had a meeting with Duane Smith a few months back and he had talked about putting power poles up to support those pumps out there. As of right now, it's 21 degrees out there and there are still no poles out there. After seeing what has happened this summer with the thunderstorms, I don't think Washoe County is prepared for this winter and prepared for the water for these residents. I also have heard a rumor about an interview that Mr. Slaughter gave at KOH. I have contacted them to get a copy and I will be addressing the mistrues that were spoken at that time. I also found out that there, an interesting rumor, the playa for Burning Man, that I was comparing to our playas. From my understanding, it was pumped, but I have contacted my, my contacts and we are trying to find out if it was actually pumped and if it was, who paid for it. I would also like to bring to your attention, we were at the North Valleys cab last night and it was very disappointing to find out that Washoe County Representative Dave Solero is making decisions about the residents' rights to know and give information, which is a violation of the NRS. Nowhere in the NRS is it state what the cabs can and cannot have in them. It is our right to speak and it is our right to hear. So I have taken it a step further. I told everybody there and I have spread it out and asked them to spread it out, to email each and every one of you so they hear from you, you hear from the North Valleys, that you hear what needs to happen out there, what residents are thinking. Also, I told them to use the 311 for every issue that they have. Maybe if you guys get overwhelmed with emails and 311 calls, maybe you will handle the cabs correctly. I know that a lot of the residents are upset with the way things are handled. I also want to bring to your attention that the city of Reno, Washoe County, you guys are like Roger Rabbit. Do you remember the story or the movie about Roger Rabbit when Jessica Lange comes walking in? Well, his eyes bug out, his ears go horn and his tongue rolls out and his feet are pattering. Well, that's how you guys seem to be with developers in the city of Reno. You lose your brain, you lose your, your motor skills, everything. It's time to start thinking. The only good thing that has happened so far is the Estradas finally have a great working well. Thanks for your support. They appreciate it. And I also want to state for the record that the commitment from the Chair has fallen off.
Thank you.
And Washoe County Representatives also.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Debbie Phillips, followed by Mr. Frank Reed.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. For the record, my name is Debbie Phillips and I live on Chesapeake Drive. It's in the area of Lemon that is backways. I would like to address the issue of the Haskell units that are still in the Lemon Valley area. The Haskell units are the big square units with the sand and everything in to help retain the water. Couple of areas where they are still at now, there's no water. With Arkansas closed, Deodore and Nectar are the only two paved streets in and out of the area where I live. They have Haskell units on one side of the pavement, making it dangerous when you meet an oncoming vehicle. Most times, vehicles on the opposite side of the roadway from the Haskell units are forced off the pavement onto the, the janning area and a lot of times, there's not a whole bunch of area there. This is especially true when we have large vehicles such as school buses, UPS trucks, the garbage waste management trucks. Anytime you have a large vehicle, the vehicle opposite of the Haskell unit is forced off the road. There's not enough room there. Once the roads become slippery, this is going to become extremely dangerous. Also, the north end of Lemon Valley, or Lemon Drive is still not open to through traffic. It's only open to the local residents. The rest of us have to detour through a housing area off from Lemon Drive. It's a neighborhood with smaller neighborhood streets, narrower with no shoulders. Residents' cars and trucks are usually parked along these streets. Schoolchildren are walking to the bus stops. Soon, it will be dark with no lights on the streets. The children will be difficult to see. If all the non-resident traffic is forced to continue through the residential area as a detour as winter hits, it's going to be very likely that someone is going to be injured or killed. The area of Lemon Drive that's still closed, it's through traffic. It appears to be in the same condition as the rest of Lemon Drive that is open to everyone. With the only exception is it has a pump with a hose that runs across the road. It doesn't appear that the pump is working, so it's just there. If that could be removed, we could travel on the Lemon Drive Road and stay out of the residential area, therefore lessening the risk to the residents of that area. The one other question I have is, we have not seen any substantial action from the state or the county out there in that area since the Haskell units were put up this winter. I'm wondering if there's anything that's being planned to help stop the lake from flooding us again. We really don't want that. I don't know if it's a good time to maybe start adding to the levee, you know, so that it can, the water can be contained this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Frank Reed. I'm sorry, Ms. Reed. Please correct me if I pronounced your name wrong. Followed by Mr.
Reed was correct, right there. Good morning. This is the first time I've ever been in here, the whole works, first time ever giving a speech. Basically, I've been born, raised and drafted right here in Reno, Nevada. I know where... I'm not happy about how the county is putting the cart before the horse, the horse, on the majority of all these developments that are happening out in the North Valley areas. I think the developers should have to pay for everything. All the roads, all the water, all the fire, all the police, all the waste, all the schools.
You're here.
Stop making the homeowners pay for it all. Again, the cart before the horse. Fourth and Virginia used to be the freeways. And that was it. The Spaghetti Bowl came in, has become a total mess with all the traffic. Fix it first before you get any more thing, anything happening in the North Valleys anywhere, the whole works. 395 North Valley, Cold Springs to Spaghetti Bowl. It's been planned to be widened for a long, long time and still, nothing has ever happened. But still, more development comes out there and more traffic comes in and we still have a big old mess in this Spaghetti Bowl. Then, and now the Red Rock area, Silver Knolls area, three developments supposed to be going in out there. And I'm in, closer to Fred's Mountain Road. All those developments are before me. So I have to drive all the way through to 395 on Red Rock to get to it. And still, I'm here and nothing's being done about Red Rock either. The cart before the horse, guys. That's it. And my name was Frank W. Reed and the Reed is spelled W-R-E-D-E.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you much.
Next, I have Mr. Sam Denae, followed by John, John Galano.
Sam D-N-A-Denae, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno government. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I have more credentials than all of those supposedly elected bureaucrats up there. Virtually all of them. Air Force Academy graduate. I flew fighters and bombers defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border for many years. And for the last 25 years, I'd been defending the city against bureaucrats and against especially the Reno wacko freak media mouses. It does my heart good, it does my heart good to see the sheriff and the police chief sending deputies down here to protect Sam's right and duty to castigate the wacko freak corrupt, mendacious media wacko freaks, especially the Reno Gazette. And to, and to protect the citizens from bureaucratic blundering, which I've been doing for many, many, many years successfully. But you don't know about it because the media wacko freak traitors refuse to report the truth about the great things I have done. As far as the, having the deputy over there protecting Sam, protecting Sam against everything else, especially the media wacko freaks, I wish he could speak out and tell the wacko freaks sitting over there writing to tell the truth. I have defended, I have defended the chief of police and the, and the sheriff from the media wacko freaks as much as anybody else. When the, we, the, the wacko freak media really, really hates law enforcement. They hate them. They hate them with a desire hatred. I see it all of the time. Most of you people here have never been here before. I'm here all the time and I see what's going on. It's a horrible, horrible thing. And you know what? I'm very mad at some of the companies in this community. I have done more for the companies, the businesses in this community than anybody else in this community, even more than the beloved Edon. And yet, for some crazy reason, those companies, they can't get at me, but they try to get at my family. And for some reason, even though I've done so much for them, so much for them and nobody can deny it, they hold a grudge against Sam. What is with that? And as far as the passing of that beloved wonderful person, he was a wonderful person. He was an icon in the arena of gaming, in the arena of gaming and, and wine making, just like Sam. Sam is an icon, the icon of Reno in the, in the area of doing good things from Reno, starting from saving Burning Man, single-handedly, all the way up to bringing Tesla to Reno. And now we've got these C-130 firefighting, C-130s that are here because Sam, I ordered Washington to get them.
Thank you, Mr. Denae.
Thank you. Thank you over there. Thank you.
Next, I have Mr. John.
And you're welcome.
John Galano.
Give it a go. Good job, Sam. Just trying to inspire. Hi. I've never done this, so. I have a prepared speech here, but there has been some changes since I wrote this and I'll explain at the end of my speech. So, my name is John Galano. I'm here because I'm very concerned about a letter received, that I received about work being done by Washoe County regarding the removal of culverts on Nob Hill Drive in Golden Valley. The letters we received last month from Washoe County states that nine of us will have culverts removed and that the county would be happy to come and talk to us on-site to discuss the work being done. I've spoken with Sam, with Rhodes, but my understanding is that the, that Walter with engineering is the decision maker. My understanding is that the culverts are being removed due to the overreaction of some localized flooding down the street from me. I would like to know how the removal of my culverts is going to relieve any flooding that occurred on the opposite side of my street downhill from me. These culverts have been in for over 15 years, purchased by the homeowners. We have never had any issues with localized, I mean, we all have some localized flooding, but nothing like we had last year. It was the heaviest rain and winter we've had in Nevada's history. Everyone had isolated flooding in Golden Valley. No houses in Golden Valley got flooded. And you're going to remove my culverts because of a couple of people are upset about land damage. Look at what happened in Lemon Valley. Some of those houses were lost, a lot more than running, water running through their yards. I'm very concerned at the impact this could have on my neighbors. I'm very concerned about what will happen to my trees. My trees are not on their easement, but after 15 years, you can bet their roots are. I'm very concerned about the parking. For the last 15 years, you have allowed us to design our lots and our land with the parking in front due to the culverts. Now, these are being removed. I don't have any parking anymore. My friends and family will be parking in the street. Another big concern is the school bus at the corner of Margaret and Nob Hill where I am. And the kids are going to have to, I guess, stand in the ditches in the dark. I would hope that before any of this work can start, all of these things need to be considered. Now, the change has been that I finally did talk to Dave Soleros this morning and he talked to Dwight, who Dwight called me. And Dwight said that he will meet with us tomorrow and my neighbors at 4:30. The problem is, they're doing the work in front of my house right now, as we speak. I left my house with a tractor digging a hole in front of my house. Before, we got to have a meeting. So I just would like the stop, the work to be stopped until we have our meeting and everybody's on an agreement of what is going on here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Mr. Danny Kleas, followed by Tracy Hall.
My name is Danny Kleas, for the record. I look up there. I don't see nobody here looking up there anymore. Working together regionally to provide a sustained, a safe, secure and healthy community. Where is it? I don't see anybody working together. It's residents against the county. We have to fight for what we need. We need more sheriffs. Just the other day, there was a dead body out in Lemon Valley Drive. Guess where all the traffic went? 60 miles an hour down my street, again. All of it. I can't stay outside. I can't even go to the mailbox without being afraid to getting hit. Is that right? Is that safe? Last week, my neighbor's working on his house. They just bought it. Guess what? It got broken into. Is that secure? No. We need more sheriffs. There's a problem. You guys are behind the eight ball again. You know, I see you guys hiring more people for your offices. I see you guys sending your people out to go get educated. You guys are giving awards, completion awards for doing this or doing that. This man right over here, need more of them. Need somebody to patrol the area like they used to do back in the 70s and the 80s. Another thing, our cab meetings, they need to be done once a month. You taking that right away from the North Valleys people? It's not right. We should hear what you guys are planning, everything, so we can come here and voice our concerns about it. We should have somebody out there that will speak up for us. So the people that can't make it here will know that somebody's there for them. We have a lot of problems out there in the North Valleys, period, along with growth. But everything has to be stopped and fixed. If you don't fix the problem first, what do you do? You make a bigger mess, a bigger problem. Then you say, oh, we don't have the money for it. Wrong. You did have the money for it. You just didn't want to do nothing about it. Thank you.
Next, I have Ms. Tracy Hall, followed by Ms. Kathleen Shup.
Hi, Tracy Hall, for the record. I'm still in temporary housing. I'm sure you all remember me, Lemon Valley. My home, my yard is still water all over it, so I cannot go home. On a personal note, I'm here to ask you guys to please take into consideration, I know the buyouts are out there. I still have not heard from Duane Smith. Still waiting for that. But instead of waiting for FEMA, because they are so busy, maybe you guys could get together with different government entities and find the money to take care of us so we can move on with our lives. On a different note, I really feel, I do attend the city meetings as well and voice my opinion there as often as I can. I feel it's very unfair to divide the community into city and county. It shouldn't matter if I'm county or if I'm city or community, period. It shouldn't matter. I was literally told, you're county. That's why you haven't heard from the city. That's garbage, absolute garbage. The North Valleys developing, okay, I can see that, you know, progress is always a good thing, but the people that live out there and have been out there for years are out there because it's a rural area. My home was on 10 acres. I hear that there's a six acre parcel out there for some of us that need to be bought out. Do you guys realize what that does to us? You're asking us to give up so much when we've already lost so much. We do not know what our future holds for us still and we're going on eight months of being in temporary housing. Although we appreciate the temporary housing, you guys realize that my husband and I were in 1,800 square foot home on 10 acres with our animals paid for, no mortgage. Now, we're living in an apartment and I appreciate that with neighbors right on the other side of the wall. We're sharing a parking space with people we don't know. We were out in that rural area because we like our privacy. I can't leave my curtains open because I have some lady coming and looking in my window. Wow, are you kidding me? It's so unfair. Still traveling to see my horse, still paying $2.25 a month to board her. Again, unfair. I pay my taxes, just like- I pay my taxes, just like everybody else. I need to feel like I'm part of the community, an important part of the community. The developers out there need to take a trip around Lemon Valley and see what the development that has already happened done to us already. They need to take that into example, because White Lake is gonna be another problem this winter, if we have a wet winter. You guys are gonna have another Lemon Valley issue if something's not done out there or stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Kathleen Shup, followed by Ms. Elise Weatherly.
I'm Kathleen Shup, and I live in the Wild Creek area, and I'm here to plead with you again to turn the Wild Creek Golf Course over to a private concern for management and retain it as a golf course. The school district wants it really bad, and they want 60 to 80 acres of the 212 existing There's a lot of transpiration, that is, the water vapor that rises off of grasses that is going to be eliminated and paved over, and that's gonna change a lot for probably the entire county. There's an old joke, and I want you to bear with me if you've heard it before, but I think it really applies, and that is that there's a traveling salesman that's going through the farming communities. He stopped and he was talking to a farmer about his tractors, and he saw a pig come by. This pig had three legs, and he was hobbling around with one wooden leg, and the salesman says, "What's the story on that pig?" The farmer says, "Well, this is the damnedest pig." He said, "You know, when our house was on fire, that pig came in and he woke us up, saved our lives. And then when my son was drowning, that pig jumped in the water and saved my son." Pig like that, you don't eat him all at once. So, that's what happened to his leg. They took his leg off so they could eat it. Terrible story, and that's what's gonna happen to the Wild Creek Golf Course. You're taking a leg off of this pig, which is, of course, a beautiful pig. Thank you.
All right. Next, I have Ms. Elise Weatherly, followed by Mr. Roger Edwards.
Hi, Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. Just to let you know too, I was, I worked for the Eldorado for 23 years. I was their director, but my, I was diagnosed with something that was supposed to be terminal, and I was sustained, and I heard a voice telling me I was gonna be sustained. By the way, Don Carano never knew my name. What I wanted to do is come here and share a little bit of experience, research, and my analysis on things, and the deal, it has to do with what Sam was talking about. Is there such a thing as truth? I'm gonna be generic to begin with, and then specific later. So, can something be true and false at the same time? No. Just because I won't believe the facts, does that make them unfactual? No. Can there be a difference between truth and public opinion? Do the facts actually matter? Yes. Then how do we determine what's true? So, I wanna start with something like oxygen, okay? So, somebody says that there's air, and I say, "Well, I can't see it, so it must not be real." And I can breathe it, and I can prove that it's real, but a person might not just take my word for it because they can't see it. So, what do they do? We take away the oxygen, and they die. And there's the proof. Okay, I wore this t-shirt today. Is it a nice t-shirt? Well, the fact is, I wore a t-shirt, that's the fact. Public opinion, is it nice? I don't know. I'll leave that up to somebody who has an opinion in that area about what's right or what's wrong. So, what about air? I'll ask the authority of air whether air is real. And so, what I'm gonna say is, if I wanna know something is real or not, I inquire of the person that's in charge. So, let's talk about things like our kids, okay? What's right and what's wrong? Who determines what a child shouldn't, shouldn't do with their own body? All right? Now, the reason I bring this in, this is more of a specific thing, and it has to do with the Jan Evans Youth Center. We should go into the schools and those places and say, "Kids, you can't do whatever you want with your own body, okay? Please, it applies to murder, it applies to robbery, it applies to theft." The reason I'm bringing this up now is because I know a lot of anti-abortionists that are going, "You women, you're marrying your children." Why don't we start with the root of the issue in the schools, in the juvenile systems, and say, "Boys, don't chase around girls to get whatever you can from them. Girls, say no. There are certain things that are right and certain things that are wrong." And those that point the finger of blame and say, "Oh, you, you know, you have to go have that baby." You men in these churches, where are you? Where are you to help raise these kids that these women decided to go ahead and have? So, what I'm asking you guys is, please let us go into the schools, please let us go into the juvenile centers, please let us teach the kids from the root of the situation what's right, what's wrong, and not make it a public opinion that they can do anything they want with their body. We can test things out, too. I've tested things, I know it's true. They took away gun control in Chicago, and now their law-abiding citizens can't have guns, and guess what? The crime rates increased. So, we can test things out, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Roger Edwards, followed by Ms. Victoria Edmondson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, it's more fun on this side of the mic than that, have to comment. Many years doing this job, volunteering, and it just doesn't get any better. I mean, here, we're looking at extending Waste Management's contract to 20 years. You gotta be kidding me. We've been wrestling with it for 20 years that I know of. The county needs to take that back. That's a public service as much as water, sheriff, or anything else. It's a public item that needs to be remanaged by this body. Take it away from the individuals, and let's bring it back home where it belongs. Item two, I got sick to death of hearing that, "Well, this person has a right to develop his property anywhere he wants," and that's nonsense. And if you guys don't approve something, or through the Planning Commission, don't approve a county project, they just slide it off into the city and get it approved and do it anyway. You guys need to have the call of cahonies in the street enough to say, "Wait a second. Even if it's not an item of regional significance, it still impacts the county, so we should have some kind of voice in what you're doing." I don't care if it's on this side of the street that's a city, or this side of the street that's a county, if it impacts, like Silver Lake, for instance, or all the rest of them out there that are gonna be overflooded with effluent, it impacts us, and we need to have a voice in it. And there's, the other items that I'm concerned about, which has been a problem as far as I'm concerned for years and years, is the cabs and the NABs. I know we don't have any input into the NABs, but I've been arguing for cabs the whole time. As a Planning Commissioner, I never made any decisions without hearing from the locals. I would send a project back to staff to go out to the neighborhood to get a cab or some kind of input from the neighbors, if they didn't already have it in my report. We need more of that, not less. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. I have, followed by Ms. Victoria Edmondson, and then I have Ms. Kathy Brandhorst. Ms. Edmondson, would you like the overhead?
I don't, I don't know if...
Can I get the overhead, please?
Victoria Edmondson, for the record. I don't know if you're gonna be able to see that or not. That's a picture of White Lake, taken yesterday. Believe me when I tell you, it is full. Stonegate will not proceed without a letter or memo of understanding from the county, from you guys, for their waste treatment. So, I just, I'm here because I want you guys to know, you have been hoodwinked. The original PUD, she's trying, the original PUD said that Stonegate would produce 187,000 gallons of sewage per day. Okay, so they had to revise the PUD, and now they added the piece close to White Lake for their town center and the high school that they wanna build there, which is crazy, but anyway. Now, they want Washoe County to sign off on taking care of 4.2 million gallons of sewage per day. So, to get some idea of what that is, not some strange number, I did some research. The capacity of White Lake is 2,500 acre-feet of water. Okay, so if you do the calculations and everything, 4.2 million gallons of sewage per day ends up filling White Lake twice a year. Really? In a closed basin? They think that the closed basin of Cold Springs can take care of all this sewage? Of course, they want to pay for the expansion of the Washoe County sewage treatment facility, but the lake is full. Where is all that water gonna go? The other thing I want you to know is that years ago, Cold Springs was identified as needing another entrance and exit, as identified by that fire that we had not too long ago. The only way that emergency vehicles could get in and out of the valley was along Old North Virginia. Old North Virginia was identified years ago as being the alternative route that needed to be extended and expanded. I'm asking you to please pursue that program. Don't let Stonegate block off part of the frontage road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmondson. Next, I have Ms. Kathy Brandhorst.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, I'm still living on C Street. I'm still in apartment number four. It has gotten so bad over there, it's just unreal. More bodies, more human bodies are dragged out of the alley. Why? Because they come out with their machine guns and shoot them all down in the alley. I don't care if it's daytime, I don't care if it's nighttime, after dark, during the hours of 2:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning. The time is, doesn't really make any difference because there's still dead bodies, bullet holes. Bows and arrows are used, so the arrows would go through their bodies. Murder is what you're being charged with, all of you. You're all charged with murder because that's what it is. You're murdering on the property, no matter what. I was supposed to move, but I still have no idea where I'm going to move to, because there has been so many break-ins because of death row. They were evicted from houses after houses after houses, even counting over a billion times. You're still evicted from the house. You still refuse to stay off the property where I'm gonna move to, because you have no place to move to. You have no idea, you know, what you're causing, but yes, you do. Shooting down police officers, shooting down the sheriffs right on the property because you have to have a place to live for nothing. You can't pay rent, you can't pay your gas, you can't pay electric, you can't pay your phone service, you can't even pay for your sewer lines because you don't have no money. You all been charged embezzlement for stealing other people's bank accounts. Also, our payroll checks are still being stolen because you don't have the payroll checks either. You don't have jobs either, but, you know, you're gonna hurt everybody else in this city to get it. Well, I just wanted to let you know, more murders are still taking place where I live right now on C Street. And there's not any lift-up on it either.
All right. Seeing that we have no further public comment at this time, we'll bring it back to the Board. We are on to item four. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, item four is Commissioner County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
All right. Do I have anybody signed in at this time to speak? All right. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if we can get CSD to coordinate with NDOT to have a presentation on both 395, the timing, and Pyramid, specifically, the acceleration and the light at Caillou de la Plata, sort of be the acceleration lane from Rocky Ridge to Caillou de la Plata, and then the upgrades on Caillou de la Plata, the timing of that. I get more comments on those two issues, even though 395 North is not in District Four, I still get a lot of comments on that, and South, of course. And then, when will we see the cabs come back, Mr. Manager, for some review, so that we can kind of understand some of the changes that we're going to make? And how will we deal with some of the outside agencies making comment at those cab meetings? We had a cab meeting at East Truckee Canyon, and it was, it was a great meeting, but it would've been nice for the sheriff to be there, and sadly, the sheriff was not able to attend, and so we, there's kind of an expectation that there are those outside agencies attending. And then, I'd also like to find out, when will we bring back sort of a dashboard for hotspots for speeding? That's a number-one issue on some of the side roads over in Spanish Springs, where people use them to circumvent some of the larger roads, and in order to get where they're going, they well exceed the speed limit. And then, final, with RTC, it would be nice if we could have RTC come in and talk to us about RIF fees and how they're distributed. One of the biggest complaints that I get from developers themselves is that I've paid all of this money into RIF fees, and the regional roads are, that we impact should be improved by RTC, but they're not. And so, I think that it would be nice to have a conversation about that. And at the same time, I'd like to have a conversation about Eagle Canyon from Neighborhood Way to West Caillou de la Plata. Lots of stuff. Sorry, staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Hartung. Next, I have Commissioner Herman.
Well, Commissioner Hartung covered several of the, or a few of the problems that I was going to talk about, one being the cabs and bringing them back up to the same standards we had at one time. So, that was an important one. And then, about the roads, I would back all his questions up quite strongly, so hopefully we can get that on the agenda soon. There's something that's quite imminent, and I was just wondering if there was any way, Mr. Manager, to stop that project in Golden Valley, where they're taking out culverts, and tell the people, I believe there's about 10 of them, that are involved in this, the citizens with culverts, and stop that job until they can be, have an explanation? Maybe somebody could go out there right now and take care of that? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Next, I have Commissioner Jung. Just now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few announcements and some staff requests. Commissioner Herman, Commissioner Hartung, and the county manager and I all went last week after our meeting, our short meeting. Some of you, Commissioner Herman was already at the Nevada Association of Counties meeting in Winnemucca. I think that it was very educational and a great time, and what a beautiful little city Winnemucca is. So I just wanted to let people know that we are working with all of our partners throughout the state of Nevada with all 17 counties in representation there. Somebody at least from each county was there, elected. On Saturday, for the Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation, I did the Tales on the Trails 10K at Hidden Valley Park, and that was a fundraiser for this foundation. And I want to let you know just how beautiful it is running up into those foothills and looking down over the valley. I hadn't realized that. And thank you, Mr. Manager, but the executive director, who is also our parks commission chair, it was their fault that the bathrooms were not open. Somebody did have a key, it just wasn't communicated because this was a large event and there are no bathrooms in the middle of the desert, which could be a little hinky. So, but Mr. Slaughter, right away, responded when I called and got somebody out there. But Nate Daniels wanted to let you know that it was no ranger fault, that it was just a miscommunication on their staff and team. Tomorrow, I will be at the Truckee Meadows Community College Diversity and International Student Center and Office Grand Opening to represent all of you, which is also in my district, but everybody is welcome to be there. It's at 11:00. I want to remind the public, and especially our employees, that the Washoe Impact Awards will be on Thursday, which is in lieu of our usual State of the County, and this is where we are honoring employees and their contributions to our goals, roles, and mission. And that should be a really neat event, and I look forward to the two MCs, Mr. Slaughter and Chairman Lucy. The Freedom Fund banquet for the NAACP is this Saturday. I am a sponsor, I've been a sponsor all 10 and 1/2 years that I've been in office, and unfortunately, I will not be able to attend that. I know Mr. Slaughter bought a table, I know they're looking for people who want to sit at that table, staff-wise, there's a couple. So, staff, if you have a burning issue, please go there. I can't go there because I had previously, about six months ago, decided to do a half marathon with some girlfriends in the Grand Canyon for that whole weekend. We leave on Friday the 13th, we do a race on the 14th, and then we're staying till Monday. So I can't be at the Freedom Fund, but I hope it is a great event and that they raise a lot of money. And then, can we look at the legality of developer impact fees? Do we still have wiggle room there? I always feel like we're constrained with the law, but I truly do believe growth should pay for itself, and it never has in this valley. I mean, I don't know what city has figured that one out, and maybe we should just look at some best practices. And if we have to go to the legislature, we go to the legislature, or if they have a special session, let's throw something in there, because this is going to affect everybody who's going through a time of growth. And truly, it should be on the back so the new people, or the people buying a new house there, because the developers will just push it on to the buyers, which is fine with me, and then we collect those impact fees and make sure streets, sewer, schools are properly funded. If not, I have another idea, and I'd like to bring this back to the board at a future agenda item, and that is the general services tax that the legislature gave us when they swept our funds in 2009. We have the potential to raise about $16 million a year. Average extra cost to you as a, when you register your vehicle, a new vehicle, mine would be much cheaper, I drive a 2002, is about $28 extra a year. That would raise us $16 million, and we could use that for things like flooding in Lemon Valley, and reviewing and replacing. And I hear you, they want to stay there, Mr. Manager, so we also need to figure out a way to implement that. People don't want to move out of their valley, they do like the isolation, they do like that rural lifestyle, and it's difficult to similarly situate them. So that money could be used for that. Additionally, we could use that money for law enforcement officers and expansion of the jail. We know we have a very old jail with a lot of liabilities, and we usually pay out a lot of liabilities because of this dysfunction of a jail that was built properly 30 years ago, but is now in desperate need of an update. We could also help us pay for the homelessness crisis that we are experiencing downtown. Do you know that every night for the past five days, there's not been one extra bed? And it's not even really cold yet. So, I want to have a healthy conversation. Tell me about developer impact fees, but then I also want to talk about the government services tax at the DMV, and figure out a way to use a pile of that money to help Sparks develop their downtown, and help Reno develop their downtown so that we're all in this game, and it's not just the largesse of Washoe County. So those are my remarks, and I'd rather do this sooner than later, Mr. Manager. I mean, I know you have a ton on your plate, and we're getting ready to go in the holidays, but if we could get it before the first of January, I would really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Next, I have Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to emphasize that I really support this concept of revisiting the cabs. We're hearing entirely too much concern about the cabs at all level. I hear it from Incline Village, I know everybody else is hearing it, so I think it's perhaps time for us to bring it back and revisit the cab issue. My major concern today, though, is I'd like to have a presentation regarding the county sewer plant in the north valleys. And what's its capacity? And how do we, does it currently have the capacity to handle all of the growth that's proposed for the north valleys? Where is the sewer system for city houses going to go? Where is the drainoff going to go? Is that going into our sewer in the north? And if it is, who's going to pay for increasing that? And I think that this is something that has become a major issue that we are going to have to address. And so, and I think there's some, I know we've got to grow, I understand the concept of growing, but I think there's some value in saying, we need to look at what growth's impact is going to be on things like water, sewer, those types of things. I've maintained all along that there are five major issues, and water and sewer is certainly one of the, at the very top. Safety's an issue, as you know, I'm one of those commissioners who constantly says, "We need more sheriff deputies, we don't have anywhere near enough." And so, these are all issues that we need to take, to step back and take a look at, but clearly, this issue of our sewer system in the north valleys, and all of the proposed growth, much of which is in Reno's footprint, we have to figure out how we're going to do that. And I know that that's an issue that's going to be looked at at the Regional Governing Board with the rewrite of the regional plan, but I'm thinking that the county needs to step up to the plate and take a look at what's going to work for us before we get too far down the road on the regional governing plan. Anyway, and excuse my voice, I'm sorry, it's froggy this morning. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Hartung.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, I have a few comments and requests this morning. You know, I unfortunately wasn't unable to attend as a member of the Executive Committee for the NACO Board, the NACO Conference for Nevada Association of Counties, but we were well represented by Commissioner Hartung, Commissioner Herman, and Commissioner Jung out there, and Manager Slaughter. I think it was a well-done conference that covered a number of issues, and I'm glad that my counterparts were there, making sure, and fellow commissioners were there, making sure that we're moving the state forward in the right direction. It's through Nevada-NACO that I have made the friendships and professional relationships with the commissioners from Clark County, the individuals that, you know, obviously played a major part in last week's tragedy. With that being said, those commissioners, what I would ask of this commission, I'd like to draft a letter with all of you, I've had a copy of, have a copy received, and I'd like to sign that and have that sent off to, it's a letter of support to Sheriff Lombardo, the fire chief in Clark County, the Clark County staff, and Clark County commissioners, recognizing our letter of support and continued support for Clark County, our sister county to the south, because we are one Nevada, we're a strong Nevada, we want to continue to unify as a Nevada. And it shows our commitment to continue to heal and grow together. So this is something I would like for this commission to do moving forward, and I think it just reinstates our commitment to them and continuing to heal as a community. While I wasn't able to attend the NACO Conference, I was, I did participate with a number of individuals from Clark County and also Reno as the chairman of the RSCVA, chairman of this commission, and also the vice chairman of the RTC back in Washington, DC. There was a number of meetings back there in regards to transportation, public lands, FEMA funding, and also tourism and transportation in and out of our community. While I was back there, I did get the opportunity to visit the west wing of the White House and work with staff and discuss issues while we were there, I meant with our delegation and multitudine opportunities. So we will continue to work with our federal delegation and the White House as we continue to address these issues in northern Nevada. Another big issue that's going on right now, you know, we want to send our support also to, we did send support, physically send support to Northern California and the Napa Valley area, and the Napa County, Sonoma County area to deal with a tragic fire that they're fighting in the north, and we understand how devastating fires can be. Theirs have been tremendously worse than anything we've seen here, and we wish them the best, and all the firefighters safe, and hopefully, successful opportunities and operations while they're dealing with such a traumatic, major fire in Sonoma County and also Napa County. One other thing I'd like to ask for, too, is I'd like to ask for an update in regards to the ditch. I know we've talked about culverts, and we heard some discussions about culverts in north valleys today. I know that's part of an ongoing project to retrofit and fix some individuals, but more some clarity for all of the commissioners would be great, for our clear understanding, and then also some further discussion. But I also would like to talk about, I know we've had staff discuss this with us, but just an update in regard with some of the ditch cleanup around the county. I know on the south valleys, I've had a number of constituents call me concerned with the runoff coming into this fall and into the wintertime, how we're going to do with those ditch maintenance and what that's going to look like. So we can relay that information out to our cabs and also to our development or planning commission members so that we can kind of disseminate that information. You know, and I want to talk about, you know, one thing that kind of struck me through my trips to Washington, DC this last week, time, is that we continue to strive here in northern Nevada to elevate who we are. We want to continue to welcome businesses into our community and continue to grow and thrive. But one of the beautiful things that is northern Nevada is our ability to maintain a rural lifestyle but a city life. This is a challenge, it's a unique challenge by all government entities that are involved, and how to balance adequate and proper planning and proper development as we move forward. I think a number of individuals moved to our beautiful area because of the quality of life, because of the rural nature, because of the ability to turn a corner and see a tree and not a building. I think that's one of the landmarks that really we pride ourselves upon. And so, as we move forward, I know as myself, speaking individually as a commissioner, that's a focus, you know, and I think that's important, that we maintain that safe sustainability, that we can maintain the lifestyle that we're accustomed to, yet continue to develop and entice businesses to come to our area and make it adequate for them as we move forward. So, with that being said, you know, I'd like to look at some of those ways to maintain that in the new regional plan, as we work with the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, as they are developing the regional plan, and because it is important, not only to my district, and I hear it quite often on a number of levels, but how we start dealing with traffic, how we start dealing with communities, how we deal with schools and impact fees, and how that stuff is paid for. And I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Jung, if this is an issue of impact fees, how do we go about that, and where are those fees looked at? So we need to start addressing that sooner. You know, and it's not about increasing taxes, so to speak, it's about being efficient with the money that we have, making sure that we're moving forward in the right direction. So, with that being said, those are the only announcements and asks that I have currently. So with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Jung, thank you for bringing up NACO, and it was very, very well-hosted. I was very impressed with Humboldt County and how congenial it was. And I will say, if you have not been to Winnemucca for the food recently, holy mackerel, the food was amazing. It is, it is, you know, you don't expect it to be as good as it is, but boy, I'll tell you, I did not have a bad meal there. So, again, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Jung, it was a great event. One thing that I would be remiss if I didn't mention was the jail symposium that we attended. Very good. And one of the conversations that I would like to have, and this is a conversation that we need to have publicly, I believe it's NRS 121.020 is the NRS that calls out that Washoe County Commissioners are responsible for the jail. I understand that, I have no issue with that, except for the fact that that law, the last iteration, was in 1981. It did not contemplate a regional detention facility which was built in 1988. I'd like to have a conversation about that. Do we need to revisit NRS? And at the same time, I'd like to talk about cost recovery for bringing inmates into the detention facility. I think it's one of the ways that we can look at how to deal with some of the costs that are getting out of control with just, it's a path of least resistance. And as what was discussed at the jail symposium, which was a wonderful group of people, and they really did a very good job, in my opinion, not only our inside group, as it were, our deputies and command staff, but the outside people that they assembled. It was very, very, very well organized, in my opinion, as far as the information that was disseminated. And so I think it's time that we have this conversation about the path of least resistance. When we do have someone that has issues with mental illness, they're just taking them to the detention facility, and that identification is very important, and so, and I'm not suggesting that things have been done wrong, I think things can be done differently is really what the conversation needs to go to. And I think that this has to be a conversation, it's being led by the sheriff and the SO, his department, but I think that we also need to have that conversation about how do we deal with some cost recoveries? Because when 121.020 was last visited, there were three facilities. There was the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, and Washoe County. And I think we need to really have that conversation. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Manager Slaughter.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to kind of follow up. We've noted, staff has noted, all of the various requests you've made this morning regarding updates and future agenda items, and I just wanted to mention one, which is the Citizens' Advisory Board Program. Staff is working from direction provided by the board. There was a, you may recall, there was a memo that went to the board, giving that update and just a review of that. We will certainly get that, we'll prioritize that as, from the various items you mentioned today, we'll prioritize that particular one and get that back to you as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir. All right. Seeing no further discussion from the commissioners at this time, we are on to our consent agenda. So, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, your consent agenda is represented in item five on today's agenda, those are items 5A through 5I3, and we have no changes that I'm aware of.
Great. I do have, are there any items in the consent agenda that would like to be removed at this time? Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to remove anything, but I do want to point out on 5H3, an in-kind donation in the amount of $82,879.50 of supplies and materials for two additional equestrian areas at Ranchera Holdings LLC, and I want to take this opportunity, and approve a maintenance agreement for the Bartley Ranch equestrian improvements that are going to be handled by this, and I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Chip Bowlby, who is the person who made this donation to us, and it's very, very positive because we have lots of equestrian- activity throughout that entire area. So we really want to thank Mr. Bolby for this. And with that, I would move to make a motion to approve the consent agenda if there's no other changes.
Okay, I have, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I do have a, I have a motion from Madam Vice Chair, but I have further discussion from Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item five H two, I actually got a call from a purveyor in Spanish Springs asking about this, and I'm just wondering, I don't necessarily want to pull it, I realize that it is a request to initiate proceedings, but perhaps legal can give us some direction on, on what the intent of this is. I, I have a, a small tavern owner out in Spanish Springs that is concerned, he saw it come up and, and just had some questions.
So, Mr. Commissioner Hartung, would you like to pull the item?
No, I think, I think just, I think just if, if.
Brief discussion would be okay for you?
Brief discussion would be fine, Mr. Chairman. I have no issue with initiating the, the proceedings, it's just a, a question for, for legal about the, the idea of what we're trying to achieve here.
Okay. Mr. Leparelli, can you field that for us?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, item five H three is.
H two.
Pardon me. Is a request for the Board to allow the process of drafting and bringing back to the Board an ordinance, which would modernize the section of the county's code related to limited gaming establishments. Right now, the county code definitions are, are out of sync with what City of Reno has, what the City of Sparks has, and, and to some extent arguably with the guidelines that you get from the state gaming control board. And, and the aim of this, when it comes back for your consideration as an ordinance, is to clarify what the definition of a limited gaming establishment is, dealing with issues like food service and, and the kinds of things that distinguish a, a true limited gaming establishment from just a room full of gaming machines with no, with no accessory services, which they're supposed to have.
That's completely adequate, Mr. Leparelli. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. No further discussion. I do have public comment. I'm going to call Ms. Elise Weatherly down.
Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. I will just say that I'm glad that this is a forum for public declaration, because I will make a declaration, when I read this, item five G, my jaw dropped. And I went, man, I should have applied for a government job when I was younger. I remember government jobs used to be lesser paying jobs, having bigger benefits, but what I've noticed now is that this is a huge, a very nice hourly rate. When I was working in payroll, accounting and IT for two companies for decades, part of the thing that I used to do was go say, I would nag people and say, I really knew I wasn't being paid enough. Being in payroll, I saw everybody's payroll records, so I knew where I stood. I used to go say, this is wrong, this is wrong, this is wrong. And the HR director would say, well, we'll do a wage comparison. Well, the wage comparisons at the Eldorado were done between other casinos, so guess what? They're all a little bit lower. They never checked the public, the government agencies to see what people were being paid there. So I want to publicly declare that that, I think that is wrong, and that a lot of these privately, or these public, what are they, private companies, you know, home-owned businesses, they don't take a look at the wages for their employees like the government does. I will say that I was, I had some dealings with the Reno court system, justice system, when I took a community Bible church to a small claims court, because they were not clear on what they didn't believe, they kept, they suppressed the truth, and so I went to the court. Guess what? There were some employees there that were really good, there were some employees there that really weren't good. And no matter where we go, there's some people that do a really good job and don't. But what I want to say too is that who sets these rates? What kind of accounting system do you guys have in place? Is it fair? Is it right? Does it go with the rest of the community's pay rates? You know, the people at the top, they seem to get a really good wage. The people at the bottom, they are being crushed in this, in this city. They're being crushed. And I would try to go fight for them and work for them, and what I would get would be ignored. And what I will say with the government is that we have a tendency to take care of people who won't take care of themselves. We have a tendency to overlook and bypass people who do want to take care of business. If you're law-abiding, it seems like you get less benefits and less privileges. So all I want to say is that yes, truth of the matter is, is that we do need, need money to live, so money is a truthful matter, and we take it very seriously. Obviously, you guys have more dealings with money than almost anything else. So you have morals and you have money, and they're both important, and I hope that we've got some good accountants in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Next, I have Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. Fourteen thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Well, you have to pay for your lawsuits, don't you? So you put it in the agenda to make sure it sounds like you're going to use it for other purposes. Seventy-seven victims of sexual assault. Boy, that is the truth. We have a rapist in our area, and he still walks out there, he's not even in jail, he's not even in prison, but he still gets away with raping women and children. I just wanted to tell you, the county of total initial Medicare of victims, boy, I could tell you, the REMS has been very busy, so has the fire trucks, they've been very, very busy. Why? Because every time I hear, there's a dead body found over there underneath that bush, there's a dead body laying out on the street, there's a dead body laying by the sidewalk. Well, how much cost does that make? Is it taken out of our insurance to cover for their murders? Are you still stealing the million dollars off of my insurance to cover for all this? It says costs up to one thousand dollars for victims. Well, again, that sounds like a check that was supposed to have been deposited into my bank account. Here it is, in the agenda, to cover up for your lawsuits again? It should have been in my bank account. But you said it's for victims and other eligible persons. Well, I'll let you know that the seventy-seven victims of sexual assault is murder. Right after you rape them, you have to kill them and murder them to make sure that they don't talk and tell us who the rapist is. Who is the rapist? We all know who that rapist is, but you're not going to say it because you protect the rapists and murderers. It says regardless of cost. Of course, it is regardless of cost, because if you're behind on your lawsuits.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorse.
You're dead.
All right. I have no further public comment at this time. I do have a motion and a second. Motion by Madam Vice Chair, second by Commissioner Jung. No further comment at this time. Seeing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are on to item six. Let's do a block vote, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would propose to put into a block vote items nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Oh, and sixteen.
And sixteen. Great.
I scribbled all over my paper, so I didn't see that last one.
All right, so I have a motion currently for a block vote for nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Second.
I have a, I have a motion.
Discussion.
And a second. I have further discussion.
Mr. Chairman, item number nine, I just have a question about indemnification. I believe that that's, that's the correct one. I have to pull my.
Which item?
Nine.
Item number nine.
Oh, nine. I'm looking at eleven, looking.
Or is it?
Nine is the security guards for the hospital?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
It's just, yeah.
Would you like to pull that out of, you want to pull it out of the box?
It's a question of indemnification, and, and again, I think legal may be able to answer the question. Let me get to my notes.
Do we have staff?
It's a, it's a legal question.
Legal.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, how about if I read that item?
Yeah, let's, let's introduce the items and then we'll come back for that discussion.
Yes, I'll read all of them.
Yes, please.
And we'll come back to this item for discussion.
Yes, please.
Item nine is recommendation to award request for proposal number three zero two seven dash seventeen for armed hospital guard security services to the most responsible responsible bidder, Martin Ross and Associates, in an estimated amount of for fiscal year seventeen eighteen at two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. The term of the award shall be for the retroactive period of October one, twenty seventeen to September thirty, twenty nineteen with one, with one one-year renewal option at the discretion of the county and subject to available funding. If approved, authorized purchasing and contracts manager execute the agreement. Item ten is a recommendation to, one, award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsible responsible bidder for the Incline Village Community Center entrance cover project. Staff recommends Shaw Construction Company in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred dollars. And if awarded, two, approve the purchase of roofing materials from Garland DBS in the amount of three thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-three cents utilizing Cobb County, Georgia, bid number one four dash five nine zero three pursuant to the joint provision of NRS three three two point one nine five. And three, approve a separate twenty-five thousand dollar project contingency fund. Item eleven is ratify the reimbursements requested from Washoe County Nevada OPEP Trust for fiscal year two, two thousand seventeen totaling twelve million one hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars for retiree health insurance costs to Washoe County Health Benefits Fund. Item twelve is recommendation to approve a sub grant award from the State of Nevada Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public and Behavioral Health in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars and no county match to support the position and activities of the Regional Behavioral Health Coordinator retroactive to July one, twenty seventeen through June thirty, twenty nineteen, and authorize the agency to execute the sub grant award and direct the Comptroller's Office to make necessary budget appropriation transfers. Item thirteen is recommendation to approve the twenty sixteen Continuum of Care Renewal Grant for Shelter Plus Care from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand two hundred and eight dollars with a sixty thousand two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollar county match retroactive to August one, twenty seventeen through July thirty-one, twenty eighteen. Authorize the Department to execute the sub grant award, authorize the sub grant agreement for continuum of care service between Washoe County and Volunteers of America, Northern California and Northern Nevada in an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. Approve resolution necessary for same and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget amendments. Items fourteen is a recommendation to accept a supplemental grant award from the Division of Public Health and Behavioral Health, Northern Nevada Adult Mental Health Services Program in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars with no county match retroactive to March one, twenty seventeen through June thirty, twenty nineteen to provide crisis and jail diversion services through a mobile outreach safety team to individuals with a mental health condition who have come into contact with law enforcement, and authorize the creation of one FTE Mental Health Counselor Supervisor, two FTE Mental Health Counselor Two, and one FTE Case Manager Positions funded one hundred percent by the DPBH Grant Most Grant Award. Direct the Human Resources Department to make the necessary staffing adjustments subject to approval of the Job Evaluation Committee, authorize the Department to execute the award, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. Item fifteen is recommendation to accept grant awards from Nevada Aging and Disability Services Division for the following older American Act Title III programs. And one, congregant mills in the amount of two hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars with a match of forty-seven thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars from ad valorem tax, retroactive from September thirty, twenty seventeen through September twenty-nine, twenty eighteen for congregant mills. And two, home-delivered mills in the amount of five hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars with a match of one hundred and three thou, one hundred and three thousand three hundred, three hundred and eighty-six dollars from ad valorem tax, retroactive from October one, twenty seventeen through September thirty, twenty eighteen for home-delivered mills, and direct the Comptroller to make appropriate budget amendments. And item sixteen is a recommendation to, one, acknowledge a program opportunity for Washoe County Human Services to collaborate and partner with Grace Community Church of Reno to expand through a donation of property, the Crossroads Program. Two, direct staff to develop appropriate documents for the donation and transfer of such property. And three, request staff bring the completed documents back to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners to accomplish the transfer of property from Grace Community Church of Reno, a nonprofit religious organization, to Washoe County at the appropriate time.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. Commissioner Hartung had a question on, on item nine. Mr. Leparelli, do you feel that you could adequately answer that question for him in regards to the indemnity?
Well, let's hear it first.
Good answer.
There you go.
That's why he's the lawyer and I'm not. Mr. Leparelli, in, in the, in the RFP listed as RFP number three zero two seven dash one seven, Exhibit B found on page twenty-four of twenty-six, the indemnification agreement, the, the second paragraph there, it says, "In the event of a lawsuit against the county arising out of activities of provider, should provider be unable to defend the county due to the nature of the allegations involved, provider shall reimburse the county its officers, agents, and employees for cost of the county personnel in defending such actions as its conclusion, should it be determined that the basis for the action was in fact negligent acts, errors, or omissions of the provider." And so the, the question is, is the county has to defend, potentially defend a scenario? Or the general liability is over a million, the automobile liability is a million, the professional errors and omissions liability, and this is all found on page twenty-five under minimum limits of insurance. I, I, I see a million, a million, and then I, I see omissions liability for two million per recurrence and four million as an annual aggregate. Explain to me one, what I'm seeing there in terms of those total numbers, and then what happens if something occurs that, that exceeds those limits? I just want to make sure the county's not on the hook in plain English. And I have no issue with this. I think that this is a great way, you know, to, to deal with issues in a hospital.
Generally speaking, indemnification provisions and agreements are promises to either pay the damages of another party and in some instances provide a defense to claims that may result in damages and pay the damages. When parties enter into agreements, arms-length agreements like this one, they commonly ask each other to make, make them whole if there's a liability caused by one of the party's acts or omissions. This is one of those types of provisions. The county is asking the contractor to indemnify the county in the event that its actions or omissions cause a liability for the county. In the real world, if somebody gets hurt in one of these situations, everybody's going to get sued. The county, the contractor, the deputies, the hospital, everybody involved is going to probably be named. And then the indemnification agreement really becomes important in sorting out whose responsibility it is to provide the defense, and if there's a judgment against, against the parties, whose responsibility it is to pay. Now contractors obviously want to put some kind of a, of a limit on, on their liability because their resources are not unlimited, their ability to get insurance that covers their liability is not unlimited. So it's common and, and it's everyday business practice to put a limit on it. So those limits that you see in this agreement are, are typical of commercial transactions between the county and other, and other entities. And it is possible that if there was a liability causing event and a judgment against the county, that the county's responsibility would be greater than the limits that the contractor's offering to provide in here, and the county would then, in your words, be on the hook. provide in here, and the county would then, in your words, be on the hook for, for some damages. But the alternative is to ask the contractor to provide an unlimited indemnification, which even if they were willing to do it, is not worth the paper it's written on, uh, because nobody has, very few people have an unlimited ability to, to indemnify. So in my judgment, the terms of this agreement are commercially reasonable, in line with lots of other arrangements of the kind, um, that we have with, with, uh, services provided to the county, and I don't know if that wholly answers your question.
And, and it, and it does. One last question. If, if, uh, an incident occurs and the county feels that it's not being represented properly, do we have the ability to step in and, um, oversee or, or usurp that defense?
Yes. Always.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, I have public comment signed in, so Mr. Sam Danae, I have you signed in. On which item, Mr. Danae, would you like to be speaking on today?
Item one three thirteen. Sam, DNA, the DNA of, um, the DNA of America, to get right down to it, and once again, I love, I mean, I feel so com- comfortable now and safe and secure that I have the deputy over there coming over to protect me, to protect me against the media wacko freaks and all the crazy people out there who think that Sam might be the crazy one. No. Again, thank you, officer over there, sheriff's deputy, for protecting Sam, right there. You know, and another thing I want, why, what is the story with the lights being dark, and then all of a sudden, we can see what is going on? Who is the wacko freak up there who has control of the light switch? It was dark here for an hour, and then all of a sudden, we see light! I don't know what it is. I'm just asking a very important question. What I'm talking about on item thirteen, what we have here, is more money being thrown at the homeless shelter, and ladies and gentlemen, let me tell you right now, my record will prove that I have been more supportive and done more for the, for the homeless and the downtrodden than anybody else. Maybe not throw as much money at it, but I've supported them and spoken on behalf more than anybody I've ever seen at these podiums, except long ago, there was a fellow named Al Hessen who came here. He was the greatest supporter of the homeless I ever saw. I'm, I'm following his footsteps where he can. So anyway, what you have here is we're throwing, it's not a lot of money, just a hundred and seventy thousand big ones being thrown at the homeless shelter, which is being run by this thing called Volunteers of America. I am the only, virtually the only constant link between Reno City Council and the Washington County meetings. I am there, and I'm here. So I'm over there at the Reno City Council meetings. Through the years, the homeless shelter, whatever they called it then, would get, oh, maybe a hundred thousand here, a couple hundred thousand there. Suddenly, two years ago, right after the previous mayor departed, the homeless shelter started, run by the Volunteers of America, uh, never heard of them before until that time, right after Kachell left office, they're getting millions and millions of dollars from Reno. I don't know how much you guys are sending, but nothing like that. But they're getting millions of dollars from Reno, just generally speaking. But then again, last week, they got another special, three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and I'm not speaking against it, I'm just telling you, this is, something is wrong here. Now, now you're going to give them another hundred and seventy thousand? Granted, I'm supporting the homeless people, but what we need here, I'm asking the question that everybody in the community wants to know, where's the money? Many years ago, it got by with a couple hundred thousand here and there, now they're getting millions and millions of dollars sent to the homeless shelter slash Volunteers of America. Where's the money? You just going to throw another hundred and seventy thousand? And where did these homeless people come from? Were they homeless when they got here, or is there something happening in Reno that's making all these people homeless?
Thank you, Mr. Danae.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. So I have a motion. I have no further public comment at this time. Um, I have a motion, uh, by Madam Vice Chair, second by Commissioner Jung. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Please place your votes. Please affirm your votes on the screen, the motion carries five to nothing. All right, we are on to our appearances. Mr. Manager, we're back to item six, please.
Mr. Chairman, item six is a presentation update regarding City of Reno Business Improvement District, and we have a number of individuals here to speak to this item, including Brad Siegel and Assistant City Manager Bill Thomas.
Welcome, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Siegel, how are you?
Good.
Good, good.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, I've got a handout from the city, which I'll distribute to the board.
Fantastic, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Lucia and Commission members. For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. Um, it's my pleasure to introduce again Brad Siegel. If you may recall, in April, Brad came and made a presentation that he, um, was also making the next day to the city council. I would say, as Brad gets into the next stage to bring you up to date on where we're at with our Business Improvement District, that this is one of those strategies that Commissioner Hertong talked about as a different way to approach a problem that is burgeoning and getting more complex. So, um, we certainly look forward to the county's participation from the standpoint of the county being, of course, the regional government over our region and the city downtown, City of Reno being in Washington County. But also, um, as you'll find out today, you are one of the larger property owners in the downtown area, so, um, we look forward again to your participation, not only as the county government, but also as a property owner in downtown. So with that, I will introduce Brad.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure to be back. Um, I was, I was here in, uh, April along with Mary Shivi, and we gave the commission an update on the downtown Reno action plan. Um, in terms of the action plan, I, I was actually struck by your testimony earlier today because I, I think the notion of a prosperous and livable downtown really is relevant for a lot of folks in the county. Uh, the reason being, if we can concentrate more growth in downtown, and if more people are living in downtown, and we use that existing infrastructure, it's actually going to reduce some of the pressure on these outlying areas that are being, uh, that are being felt right now. So I would suggest that the downtown plan is, is really relevant for, uh, for a lot of folks, and, and again, hopefully, there's a lot of support for a prosperous, livable, vibrant downtown. Um, when we were here in April, we talked about an action plan for downtown, and, and now we're getting into implementation, and you may recall many of these activities that are on the slide, but the real key was on the bottom, was creating a champion to advance downtown revitalization efforts, a downtown management organization. And what's different about this is it's really getting the private sector, the property owners, the businesses, and the residents to be organized and in partnership with both the city and the county to advance a whole variety of downtown improvements. So in terms of moving forward, uh, the goals of this new downtown management organization are to stabilize the downtown streets, make them cleaner, make them safer, create a public-private partnership where the private sector is much more vested in downtown improvements, provide a unified voice for downtown, um, and then lastly, really employ best practices from other cities across the country in Reno. So in looking at this management organization approach, uh, we've looked at a variety of major cities in the region, Boise, Spokane, Salt Lake, Sacramento. In fact, uh, three van loads now of city and county officials have visited Sacramento to view how this, this model, this downtown management model works there. Um, in terms of how we're proposing, and this gets to the Business Improvement District proposal today, in terms of how to bring this new model to Reno, we're looking at reengineering two existing assessment districts in downtown Reno. So currently, property owners in Reno, they pay assessments for extra down, uh, Reno police and extra Reno cleaning services, and what we're proposing is to actually take these two existing assessment districts and consolidate them into one new business improvement district, and also create a new governance model for this. So the services, we'd be introducing a whole team of ambassadors and caseworkers. These are folks that would work hand in hand with police, but really focus on some of the issues of, uh, street populations in downtown, uh, reducing disruptive behaviors and also just making it overall a safer place. So one thing we heard over and over from, uh, the, the police in working in downtown is that the police job is really to deal with criminal activity, and when it comes to social work, it's really difficult for them to do that. So these ambassadors would introduce that element into downtown. This is what's been successful in Sacramento and these other cities. We'd also be working, of course, closely with county mental health, and we've met with, on a staff level, we've with, uh, met with some of the county mental health, uh, administrators. Uh, city policing would continue downtown on a heightened level. Um, enhanced maintenance that you see on Virginia Street would be expanded throughout downtown, and there'd also be support for this new downtown management organization, um, including a, a more ambitious marketing program for downtown. So since April, we have been working on the proposal for the Business Improvement District, and back in April, by the way, we got a unanimous vote from the Reno City Council, seven zero, not only supporting the downtown plan, but supporting the advancement of the Business Improvement District. Um, I won't spend a lot of time, just because of time constraints, I won't spend a lot of time on the engineering of this new district, but it does propose three different zones of service. One would provide the Clean and Safe Program, uh, which would include Reno Police, also introduce this new ambassador and caseworker approach, um, support for a downtown management organization and marketing, and then also expand cleaning services through the downtown core and along Virginia. Uh, the map on your, uh, on the screen shows the service area, it's quite large. Um, the existing improvement districts are also, um, closely aligned with this new service area. So I-80 is on the north, uh, Keystone's on the west, California on the south, and Wells is very, uh, they're just on the edge on the east. Um, we've developed a budget for these new services, um, introducing the new safety ambassadors, keeping supplemental Reno police, particularly walking and biking patrols in the downtown area, um, and then supplemental maintenance services as well. So we're proposing a two-point-three million-dollar annual budget. The current budget for the existing districts, just for comparison, is one-point-nine million. Um, and then in terms of assessments, we've come up with a new assessment methodology. Currently, the assessment districts downtown are based just on assessed value. We are introducing the notion of frontage, which is a best practice particularly for services like maintenance. Now, unlike the existing improvement districts, um, all property owners in downtown under Nevada statute, revised statute two seven one, would be assessed. So, um, in addition to property owners, to commercial property owners and residents, um, also the city and the county as property owners, uh, would be asked to participate in this new district. For nonprofits and government, we are proposing a substantial discount on rate, but still the contributions from both levels of government would be significant. So the county owns thirteen properties in downtown Reno, and the total estimated assessment on an annual basis to participate in the program is estimated about thirty-three thousand dollars per year. For comparison, the City of Reno is being asked to participate at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year. So certainly, the City of Reno has more property and are more closely vested to the outcome. Uh, there are a variety of provisions in this district, um, that relate to sort of technical requirements of this district moving forward. Um, the city will provide its existing service level plus, uh, the enhanced level of policing that you currently see in Reno will continue for at least three years. Um, we're looking at a ten-year commitment on this district with a five-year review. There are controls on rate adjustments, so the, uh, the, the, the rates cannot increase beyond certain levels on a year-to-year basis, and this does require support, petition support from property owners. So property owners are going to be asked to sign petitions, uh, to support this new district. In order to form the district, petitions from property owners representing more than fifty percent of the assessments to be paid will need to be collected, and if the county elects to participate financially, uh, your petition would count along with the others. And then finally, a new governance model for this, this new ma- downtown management organization, a five oh one C six nonprofit. In terms of a board, a governing board, we are proposing a fifteen-member governing board, uh, variety of representation in terms of geography, use type, different business types down there. Uh, also the county, we're proposing that the county would have, uh, this commission, could either, uh, one of you could serve on the board, or you could designate a county representative to serve on this board to represent county interests in terms of downtown revitalization issues. Uh, moving forward, um, we're, we're actually have, uh, forums this afternoon with property owners, and tomorrow morning, we're also, uh, presenting. You're ahead of the city council again, just like you were back in April, so tomorrow we're on the schedule for the Reno City Council to bring them up to date as well. Uh, the petition drive would be launched most likely within the next thirty days. Um, if successful, these new services would be delivered beginning July one, two thousand eighteen. So at this point, um, I think we're under time, under budget, and, um, we're happy to, uh, to take any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Always appreciate being under time and under budget here at this, in these chambers. Uh, do I have any discussion from any of the commissioners? Commissioner Jung?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Siegel and your team, for being here today. Um, I think this is one of the best things that the City of Reno has done as of late in terms of cleaning up the downtown. I represent all of those areas, that's my district, um, and we have a vested interest in our buildings downtown. We have the library, we have social services, or human services, we have, um, the, the courts, we have the parking area for Pioneer, so I want to be as big of a partner as we possibly can and commend the city council for this vision and a much-needed, uh, change of direction in terms of managing a bustling, growing, biggest little city. Um, when you say safety ambassadors, do you mean social workers?
So the safety ambassadors, um, would typically be a mix of, um, individuals who are, um, trained more like, um, well, uh, they're trained to assist, there's two types of ambassadors. So one is eyes and ears of police, so cadets, if you will, who are not deputized in any way, they don't carry weapons, but they're trained to be eyes and ears for law enforcement, and also to be visitor-trained, so they're actually helping with tourists and visitors downtown, they do a whole variety of things. They can also escort employees to cars after dark, their whole variety of sort of safety elements to these ambassadors, so that's, that's one part of it. The second part, we are recommending, um, a caseworker approach for downtown Reno. This has been successful in other cities that have, uh, issues with transient populations and also intimidating street behaviors. Caseworkers, uh, often come from social work backgrounds, sometimes they are formerly homeless people themselves who, who have gone through this experience and, and can really help and relate to some of the individuals on the street. Um, in terms of what we've proposed with the ambassadors in Reno, there's up to five hundred and thirty hours per week of ambassadors, and it'll ultimately be up to the new organization and the new board to find the right mix, the right mix between the safety ambassadors that are the eyes and ears for police, and also these caseworkers that can work with mental health, social service, and other agencies to really, um, engage daily with a variety of folks who are on the street.
May I suggest, and perhaps you've already looked into this, that you reach out to Mr. Thomas and this Siegel group, to deputies Player and Marston, they're with the sheriff's office, and they, they are sheriff social workers, they do our Crossroads Program, and so I think they could give you a lot of guidance on, you know, sort of where the hotspots are, what's the major issues, uh, you know, if they're, of course, their supervisor is another elected official, which is Sheriff Chuck Allen, if he, if he would be so generous with their time, I think they could give you a wealth of information way ahead of the game, maybe even help you train these ambassadors what to look for, because they know this community so well in terms of transforming this community, and they approach it, they do have a gun and a badge, but they really just do a lot more case management. So I, I think those are our local subject matter experts, and you probably do know, we, we received a national award for our Crossroads Program, and Madam Secretary of State Clinton, when she was running for president, came and toured our Crossroads Program and had made a commitment that she was going to make it a national program. So these guys know what they're talking about, and we're proud of it, and we, we want our idea to go viral throughout the rest of the country.
Well, and Commissioner, I'm glad you bring that up. We, we are familiar with Crossroads, it is impressive, it, it really is a national best practice, and, um, we would hope, today we're talking about getting the county hopefully involved on a variety of levels in this new initiative, and we are hopeful that these connections with county staff that deal in these areas would be part of those connections.
I think it's great, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but that's another area where the Government Services Tax could really come in and help the downtown core, which helps all of us in Washington County to have a thriving, beautiful, biggest little city in the world, and then I wonder too, has Sparks reached out to you? Because here's my concern, a lot of time what we do when we are changing behaviors and, and teaching people how to behave differently, some will get on board, but most just, we move them to a different area. So I'm wondering if you're interfacing with Sparks. I know they don't have the money right now for such a thing, but again, if the Government Services Tax, we could spread some of that to them too, because what we really want to do is eradicate it as a region, not just keep moving people around. Um, and then- And then my other question is, have you worked with the Eddie House, which is a eight-to-five Monday through Friday drop-in center for homeless youth who do not want to interface with the adult homeless population because they end up getting trafficked and manipulated? And I really encourage you to meet with Michelle Gehr, G-E-H-R, she's the executive director of the Eddie House, and she has a database analysis of if you could eradicate, if you could hold youth not to become homeless, she has a, a big theory that then you would eliminate homelessness. And if I were you, I would interface with her, because she, she will be a great champion for you, and also point out some of those issues. And she, her idea is that the Eddie House also becomes, like crossroads, nationally known, goes viral, we prove it can be done. So that's another community partner, among many others, that I'm sure you're going to look at. But Mr. Thomas and the city of Reno, I'm 100% behind you in whatever I can do, please call on me.
Thank you. We've had very brief conversations with the city of Sparks, but most of our efforts really been focused on the conversations with the county staff.
Okay. But Sparks is Washoe County, too, so.
Right, we will be talking to them, but, you know, it was kind of geographic-centered, at least for right now, but we will have that conversation.
Okay, I appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just say, me, too. A lot of things that Commissioner Jung touched on were things that I was going to touch on. So I just really have one question. So if this is being done, the increase in the proposed rates is being done by a petition that they sign and agree to, it doesn't need to go to a vote of the people?
That's correct. This is a self-taxing-type mechanism, so the assessment is restricted within those boundaries. So the assessment will only be borne by those property owners within the district, and it requires really two steps. It requires a petition by property owners, then it does require an enabling ordinance by the Reno City Council. So there would be, the petitions would be delivered to the city, a public hearing would be held, and then the council would form the new ordinance to create the new district.
Thank you. And for purposes of Mr. Manager, and I don't know, you probably can't answer this right now, but if the county agrees to sign on to this and sign the petition, do we need to hold a public hearing on it? And, and I, you probably can't answer that right now, but please put that on the list of things that we will need to discuss in, in a future meeting. Thank you very much. Great presentation, very good information. Thank you.
Commissioner Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Great presentation, Mr. Siegel, Mr. Thomas. A few questions, though, and I'm glad Commissioner Jung brought up the city of Sparks, because I was going to touch on that. That's, that's a, that's the bulk of, of my district, is the city of Sparks. And so if the county is going to financially participate in some way, even though it's some pro-rata share of, of a, a property in an area, we still have to look at how we would also participate with respect to a sister city in the county. Onto ambassadors, how will they deal with issues of the, of the, the street population, mental health? And we talked about this earlier, and the, and it's always been, and this isn't a pejorative comment about police officers and the work that they're doing, it's tough, it's very, very difficult, but in the process of trying to funnel people to get the proper help, you know, you have people with mental illness, you have people with drug and alcohol addiction, and, and on that note, with respect especially to alcohol, have you considered, you know, assessing or licensing businesses like bars that are heavier contributors than, let's say, my favorite bookstore? You know, and, and so, or the library? You know, or, or a courthouse? There's, there's a, there's a different rate of contribution with certain businesses versus others. And again, I'm not trying to whack on one business versus another, these are just plain facts, plain, pure, and simple. And you can't, you can't get away from, from one having a higher contribution rate to certain kinds of issues than, than another. And, and I will, I will applaud the casinos. Recently, they have adopted a huge change with respect to giving out free alcohol. In many cases, if you don't have credits and you're not playing, they won't feed you, they won't feed you alcohol anymore, as the, as it should be. I mean, they're really seeing this on their bottom line, and kudos to them, they're, they've really made these substantive changes. I would certainly like to see IGT create a, a way where you have to have so much play and so many credits before you can get a drink, period. And that, and, and, you know, and then, and then there's no question for the, either the bartender or the, the cocktail waiter or waitress to, to deal with that. And then, one of the biggest complaints that I get is about panhandling. Panhandle, people, it bothers people intensely, and by the way, my wife works downtown, and it's, it is, it's very, very disconcerting at times, because the panhandlers, in, in some cases, have become far more aggressive. And then it would be nice to see an ordinance, and this, it would be nice to see an ordinance in, in maybe a county ordinance, but it would extend down into the cities, that you're not going to stand on an off-ramp and panhandle. You know, that's a, that's, that's a, that's a problem. I mean, it really is an issue, and, and, and I know that both the city of Reno and the city of Sparks deal with that, especially in their major intersections.
Good.
Lots of stuff.
Yeah, Commissioner, if I could, maybe address two or three of the many suggestions you had in there. Regarding how these ambassadors are actually going to interact with folks, and I, I made the comment on my presentation that, that police generally like working with these ambassador teams, because police need to focus more on criminal activities, not so much on social work. So these ambassadors will be very, will be tailoring essentially relationships with individuals on the street. What we find in most cities, including Reno, is that a percentage of your homeless population are what are called chronic homeless. They're, they're here year after year, and, 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 and there's a, there's a percentage of those folks that these ambassadors will be working with individually to tailor different pathways for them, to, to improve their lives. So some of that may be mental health, some of that may be alcohol issues, a whole variety of things. And then when folks who are more transient, I mentioned that there's a safety element to this, so these ambassadors will be eyes and ears. I do agree with you on your last comment, that this will work better if it's coupled with some legislative measures to, to really enforce issues such as panhandling and that type of thing. And the last comment I wanted to make is, I think you're right on, in fact, we included this in the downtown plan, regarding assessments or differential taxing of retail liquor. And then, of course, coming from Colorado, I'd be remiss to not mention retail marijuana, that these are the types of businesses, that there is a cause and effect for some of these behaviors on the street. So we did recommend in the downtown plan that as a longer-term funding strategy, we look at additional assessments on retail alcohol and marijuana within the downtown as well.
And, and if I, if I may, just, just follow up with respect to panhandling, in many cases, I had a conversation with a fellow a few years back, and he said, why should I get a job? I can make more money panhandling. I can make 30, 40 bucks an hour standing on a corner, panhandling, and, and it's easier for me. It's, again, it's a path of least resistance. And so, so coupled in this whole thing, in this process, it's training.
Yeah.
How do, how do we get these people out of this, this endless loop of, of just panhandling and, and, you know, sort of on to the next moment, and the next moment, and the next moment, as opposed to training them so that they have some viable skill and become productive members of society?
And, and one final comment, Commissioner, is we've seen these districts be very successful, not only with the individuals on the street, but also the, the individuals that provide the money for the panhandling. So those of us who may be compassionate and may reach in our pocket to help these panhandlers, these districts educate us on alternatives. We, they provide, on the street, they provide options to give money to social services, or to give money to organizations, as opposed to feeding the panhandling. So whether we're residents here or visitors, there's a, there's a PR and marketing component, educational component to this, on, on those, on those of us on the street who are compassionate, want to help these people, but to provide more productive avenues for doing that.
Exactly. And Commissioner Jung and I have had this conversation before, and Crossroads is a perfect example. We're teaching them to fish, as opposed to giving them a fish. And that's a, and, and the more we can funnel that direction, I mean, you can't, unfortunately, you're never going to get 100%. It's, I mean, it's just virtually impossible to get 100%. Some sadly, you're, you're, it's a lifestyle choice, yeah, you're correct, Commissioners. But, but I, I think coupled in this whole thing is, is some methodologies to, to take them different directions and give them alternate choices.
Absolutely.
Because sometimes they feel like there is no choice, that this is, that this is it, this is, this is the only choice I have, and they don't realize that there are other choices. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Commissioner Harton. Mr. Siegel, I just had a couple of questions for you in regards to some of the businesses in the, on the Virginia Street. Now, obviously, it would be one or the other, well, obviously, it would be the BID or the ass, the Special Assessment, is that correct? That would be, it would not be both, it would be either or? Or would it be?
Correct. We're going to replace the Special Assessment Districts with a new Business Improvement District.
Okay, so just thank you for that clarification. You know, and then one thing, the one discussion that I want to have is that, as I look at the map, there's discussion on the surface level between a standard premium and a premium plus, and I think, I know, obviously, a majority of Virginia, from the Truckee River to almost the I-80 corridor on Virginia Street, is included in that premium plus. Now, a majority of those businesses are obviously casinos and could probably afford to pay significant, those significant amounts of monies, as it is concerned, to a premium plus, you know, obviously, at 0.05, 1.3% per dollar value, plus $30.70 per linear foot of frontage. I mean, have there, have you had discussions? There are some small businesses down there. There are pawn shops, there are, you know, and I know some of the businesses aren't as desirable in the downtown property, but they are property owners, and they have property rights. And I want to make sure we're addressing those concerns for those individuals, because I just don't want to impact them inappropriately. I appreciate the understanding that we need to have a Business Improvement District to help navigate some of these issues we're having, and it will be beneficial for them and their businesses, but will it be, will the cost be too heavy for some of these individuals?
That, that's a really good question, Commissioner. We, we have heard from a couple individuals along Virginia that have older, undervalued property, who will see a, a pretty significant increase in their assessment. So I've got two comments on this. One is, we would argue that it is more fair, honestly, to charge for a frontage assessment than it is a value assessment for a service like cleaning and power washing, and, and that's what's translating into these higher assessments for these handful of older properties, is we're going from value to frontage. My second comment is this, we are being sensitive to the economic realities, though, that these properties and some of these businesses face day-to-day. So NRS 271, it also requires a hardship provision be included in the Business Improvement District. So we have crafted a hardship provision whereby the city, on a case-by-case basis, could look at deferring or waiving these fees in several sets of circumstances. So for example, low, if, if there's low-income household, a low-income residential household, they could apply, and, and currently can, in the Special Assessment District for an exemption. Nonprofit organizations are going to be assessed for the first time. So if there are nonprofit organizations that are serving a public purpose, and, and they really have a narrow margin for their, their viability, they could apply for one of these hardship provisions. And then lastly, businesses, if businesses can demonstrate that this is impactful to their bottom line, but also importantly, not, not for blighted or vacant land, we want to make sure we're not rewarding people for not investing in their property. So there is the opportunity through the hardship, that if a business does have a serious economic issue where this assessment is, is becoming problematic for them, there is an avenue for the hardship provision. But we are also very clear that simply neglecting your property is not, is not a basis for a hardship.
Great. And I think that's, I think that's the best way of approaching that, because I agree those, there are a number of blighted properties down there, and the Blight Initiative has been highly successful, that city of Reno has launched. However, I just don't want to impact those that are, have been good actors, so to speak, in the downtown area because of an initiative. And I think that's just, we want to keep the good actors there and push the bad actors out, and, and I think that's the initiative. I mean, to put it in plain speak, we are, we're trying to get rid of that poor element and that bad element within our, within our area, because from the standpoint of tourism to our, that is a front door to our, our community, I think it is, is where we show our best, try to show our best, put our best foot forward, and continuously, that is, it is troubled by a number of, of issues in that area. And so if we can get that and support those individuals. One other thing I have, one other question I have in regards to the services and the, in the, the different service levels, who will be performing the work? Who will be conducting, will that be discussed by the BID once the BID is formed? Or would that be a city of, basically, if the city of Reno is going to be doing the work, are we just giving the money back? Because there are some complaints from the Special Assessment District that we've already done this once, that we've already paid the money, and that the, the businesses have paid into this, and really, nothing has resolved last time the Special Assessment was done. So there has to be some sort of accountability, not just by a board saying, well, you need to get this work done, there actually has to be some forward progress.
Commissioner, again, and, and another great question. So the decision on who will do the work will be up to the new Business Improvement District Board. So the, the board will decide. The ambassadors that we're introducing, really the newest element into this model, is not intended to be city employees. The ambassadors are intended to be employees of the bid or through some sort of contract or series of contracts. This allows a, a variety of advantages in terms of deploying the ambassadors. It provides more flexibility on hours, it provides more flexibility on the different skill sets that would be required to do this type of work on the street. So regarding the ambassadors, those are intended to be non-city employees, but work closely hand-in-hand with police. We did mention that our plan anticipates the retention of Reno Police, so certainly the Reno Police would continue to do their policing, and our plan has the retention of current police levels for the next three years in downtown. And then lastly, the maintenance services, which are currently provided by the city, the new organization would have the discretion of whether they continue to utilize city services, or to contract, or to do a combination of both. So it's sort of a long, convoluted answer to you, but it'll be the discretion of the bid board. The intention is to bring those, some privatized services into the mix and do things differently, and, and we hope more effectively in terms of addressing some of these lingering issues in downtown Reno.
Great. Commissioner Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and, you know, the chairman triggered a question for me, Mr. Siegel. I know that all of the, the casinos deal with issues of a homeless population that, that is an issue for some of their patrons internally. So once they get inside the clubs, it can, I mean, it can be a problem. I, I've heard this from quite a number of, of people. Perhaps you can work with the casinos to have internal ambassadors that, that their staff, as opposed to using a security officer to, you know, sort of just chase them off, and so then they leave one club and go to another, and leave that club and go to another, and leave that club and go to another, that, that those internal ambassadors can really work inside the clubs and, and try to affect change there, as opposed to just waiting for them to, you know, sort of find them on the street. I don't know whether I'm making sense.
Commissioner, you're totally making sense, and this is the pattern we see in cities throughout the country that employ this approach. So I mentioned that the ambassadors work closely with police, the ambassadors also end up working with private security that's deployed by different private, private property owners. I, I think it's a great idea, that if, if this approach is working on the street, that this approach would work internally with some of these properties. Let me also mention, you actually triggered another idea in, in my mind, when we were going through the downtown planning process, we worked with a whole variety of different downtown property owners, including the Eldorado Group, who, incidentally, is very supportive of this approach. One of the things we talked about with Eldorado was actually opening up some of their storefronts to the street. For example, there's a Starbucks coffee that, that could easily become a street amenity For example, there's a Starbucks Coffee that, that could easily become a street amenity and, and you could have individuals actually, you know, on the sidewalk. And these types of things are great at, at placemaking. They help make a downtown more vital. What, what they told us is if, if this works, if this approach works, and we are successful at stabilizing the street and making downtown reliably more safer, both perception and reality, that they would entertain some of these ideas and, and open up some of these facades. And that's, that's part of our vision, part of our vision. Three, five years from now, imagine if walking up and down Virginia and other streets in downtown Reno, that it's safe enough, it's secure enough, so that we've got people dining in sidewalk cafes and, and we've got more residents down there. We've got more investment drawn there. As I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, also a side benefit of, of reducing some of the development pressure, honestly, on the periphery. So, so there's a bigger vision here. We talk about services. We're talking about ambassadors. We're talking about maintenance. But, but the bigger vision is if, if downtown Reno can be reliably welcoming, inviting, clean, and safe, it triggers a whole variety of improvements that three, five, seven years from now, it's, it's a, just exciting downtown that, that attracts and welcomes a lot of different people.
And, and, you know, and I don't want this to get lost. The, the idea that, that these ambassadors would work internally would also take pressure off of security guards who have not only other things to do, but they're not trained in the same ways as these ambassadors potentially could be, where they can, they can guide these individuals, you know, to the, to the right places. And I, I just think, because I, I know for a fact, my wife, again, works in a club downtown, and, and some of the issues are, they're overwhelming. And by the time they call a security officer, because the security officer is dealing with other things, you know, that it's, it's, it's far too late. And so I think just working, and maybe they're assigned to these clubs individually. You know, maybe that's, maybe that's part of the buy-in in the bid, is that, is that, you know, these people get assigned to specific properties. Just, you know, it's a thought. Everybody has an idea, and I guess they're all on the table at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. See no further comments? Mr. Siegel, Mr. Thomas, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate you coming and presenting today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, we're on to appearance number seven, agenda number seven.
Mr. Chair, item seven is a presentation and update from EDON, and Nancy McCormick, who is Vice President of Business Retention, Expansion, and Workforce for EDON is here.
And before Ms. McCormick gets started, she did provide me with a handout, which I'll distribute to the board.
Welcome, Ms. McCormick.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, County Manager, and Commissioners. For the record, Nancy McCormick, Senior Vice President with EDON, Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada. And I am responsible for retention of existing business in the region, expansion, and workforce development. I joined EDON in April of 2012 when I retired from AT&amp;T as a Regional Vice President of Sales. I know that much of what you hear about EDON is the business development side, and so today I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about the business retention, expansion, and workforce development efforts and our support of the existing businesses that are really the foundation of our community. You can also see from this slide that EDON engages in a variety of other activities in the region that include and impact the overall county in a positive way. Some of the most important of these were the support of the Washoe County One Initiative for School Infrastructure, also the creation of the EPIC Team, the Economic Planning and Indicator Committee, to forecast growth and come together and, and project what was likely to be the growth trends through 2019, and also the Housing Roundtable, currently together to help the region keep pace with the demand for housing and workforce, housing in particular. Before I get into our day-to-day activities, I have highlighted examples on this slide of some online resources that we are providing to primary companies in the region. You have in your folder a hard copy of the Employer Workforce Resource Guide, and this was created to pull together all the resources that companies can use in order to find workforce partners, to connect with education and other resources in the community. We also have an online toolkit, which includes information about transportation options, background checks, and other helpful topics. We have a primary company list, which is used by individuals and companies inside and outside the region. And then separate from our site, there's a yreno.org site, which was developed as a regional tool for use by recruiters. It's where we collect a lot of the assets of the community into one place, so those that are thinking of coming to the community for a career change can take a look at all the different facets of the community and find information in one place. And it also has a Who's Hiring section, which enables seekers to connect with companies in the region that may have open opportunities. Also in your pamphlet, you'll find the My Future Activity book. This book was published in both English and Spanish, and it was given out to Washoe County School District third and fourth graders. The intent of this was to help parents and their children get a better idea of the new Nevada industries, the types of businesses that are here, the types of job opportunities that are coming, and the importance of science, technology, engineering, and math in their studies. The activities of the team, which consists of three people, myself, Cynthia Ayden, and a Workforce Program Manager, Valerie Cotta, really center around company visits. And on these company visits, we go out one-on-one and we visit with them to understand what resources they may be using, what resources they don't know about, what programs they're using, what programs that they could be using that would help them with their business. We do talk with them about incentives. Opportunities for recognition are provided via existing industry awards. And of course, with the growth and the numerous opportunities that are out there, workforce is really a top priority that we're having lots of conversations about. So we help them to keep their workers. We focus on retention. We provide them with information about comparable wages so they can keep their wages competitive with their peers. We help them to find workforce, to connect with workforce directly, and also with workforce resources. So a lot of activity that is being done currently really focused around the subject of workforce. About two years ago, we launched our Community Workforce Plan, and this consists of the four different components that you see, connection, retention, training, and attraction. And this really has a lot of tactics built behind it, but we are, we have a dedicated resource, as I mentioned, who's doing nothing but really working all of these different aspects of the workforce plan. Some of those activities include the co-leadership of a workforce consortium that we lead in conjunction with the Chamber. This is a big group of service providers, training providers, and government representatives and business representatives helping to coordinate, connect, and direct workforce resources. We're always working to connect employers with, with the different workforce resources, as well as connecting these resources with each other, and connecting seekers to get high school equivalency, to, to take advantage of the opportunities that exist in the education arena. There are lots of programs that are out there that are funded by Department of Labor funds that are available to help seekers get the training they need without having to pay a lot of money to get it because the, the programs are subsidized. Another thing that we're doing that many of you may not have heard about or be aware is that we're doing attraction campaigns to bring in skilled talent to the region. Some of these, I've got a snapshot of on this slide. We did a Pandora campaign last year to just promote the region via Pandora. We go to the Society of Women Engineers Conference. We'll be going to that in Austin to talk with the up-and-coming engineer graduates from schools across the country about opportunities for mechanical, electrical, civil engineers in the region. You'll see on the bottom during Burning Man, we had a billboard up there, you've got talent, we've got jobs, just trying to get people to think about Reno not only as a great place to visit, but as a great place to work and have a career. And one of our real taglines is community, lifestyle, and careers. So we're just pushing the fact that there's a lot more to the region in terms of career opportunities than many outside the community may know and be aware of. A number of overall projects also have direct positive impact on the county. We've taken out over 500 individual educators, vice principals, career counselors, and others, career and technical education instructors to actual companies throughout the area to visit and not only see the operation, but also have an opportunity to sit down with individual representatives from those companies in different jobs and talk to them about what their job pays, what the skillsets are that are needed, just learn and better understand really what's going on in the real world so the educators can help prepare the students for opportunities in the future. We do have sector councils. This is the Council of Supply Chain Management Professionals. We also have a food manufacturing forum. So we're doing what we can to support the, the actual up-and-coming industries that are growing in the area. We invite individual companies throughout the county to participate in things like the manufacturing framework meetings that have taken place to help align the education with the actual needs of the business. And we're always promoting companies to job seekers. We're promoting internships, encouraging apprenticeships, and doing a lot of things that really have a far reach throughout the county. I wanted to provide some specific metrics relative to Washoe County. We made 120 visits to companies in Washoe County in the past year out of a total of 151. Oftentimes, it's believed that we spend a lot of time out in Story County, but we actually spend a lot of time in the City of Reno, the City of Sparks, and also the unincorporated areas visiting with companies. We did have a total of six critical issues come up through the year that we measure. Two of those were in unincorporated Washoe County regarding some permitting issues that we did work through and were resolved. We also make an effort to connect businesses with other businesses. So we're trying to drive really local purchasing when possible to make sure that they know that because of the diversity of companies that are now here, they don't have to go out of the area to buy products or services, which has a direct positive impact on the county. So 28 business-to-business connections to other companies that were in Washoe County. And I mentioned briefly earlier, making sure that we recognize the existing companies that are here for their many contributions. Forty-nine of the 55 nominees were from Washoe County in our existing industry awards in 2016, and, and we had 13 winners. So we had great representation there. And then I did work last year to help Pacific Cheese and Horiba both with expansions. And these expansions added 43 jobs to the region, a total capex of about 3.6 million on equipment that they're investing, and about 2.5 million on land and buildings. So we're doing a lot of different activities on the Business Retention and Expansion Team. A lot of them really cover all the different areas of Washoe County. We're also doing multiple marketing efforts to help promote the Reno, Greater Reno Sparks area. You'll see here, this is a Taxi Talk noted on the bottom of this slide. And again, it's for visitors who may be here to ski or for another great event. And we're just wanting to reinforce the fact that you can have a great career here and you can enjoy all of the wonderful things that this area has to offer from a recreational standpoint. And if you haven't taken a look at yreno.org, I really encourage you to go ahead and, and take a look at that site. And with that, I just would like to thank you. We appreciate your support. We have a lot of great things that we're doing to keep the companies here, grow them, and also attract others to the region to fill some of the jobs that are being created here. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Commissioner Herman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. McCormick. Mr. Kazmierski really hit the goldmine when he brought you over to, in your second career. Such a transformation of this whole program and organization. And I really love the coloring book for the school district and relocation, a resource guide for employers. We've never had anything like this before, all in one area. This is not a criticism. This is a suggestion. You do a lot of Washoe County School District tours and getting these kids thinking about it. But Job Corps, just to the north, has about 550 youth, age 16 to 24, that in most cases have, on the job skills. They're also a school. You can get your high school diploma there, all the way up to age 24, so it's not just a GED. And they also are taught social skills and employability skills. So I would really encourage that the EDON team start including these 16 to 24-year-olds who are ready and willing and able to work.
Right. And absolutely, we do take part in their community luncheons. We absolutely recommend Nevada Job Corps. I recommend them probably at least once a week. So I couldn't agree with you more. They have great students. They have great skills that they can bring. And I am always offering for the companies to join me at this event so that they can see firsthand what's going on out there. I'm also on the Nevada Workforce Board with a representative from Sierra Nevada Job Corps. So it's one of the great resources that this community has that I don't think everybody really knows about and that people can be taking advantage of to get some great workers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. And thank you for the compliment. Appreciate it.
You do great work, and we sure are lucky to have you in the Truckee Meadows.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Herman.
Sorry. Thank you, Chair. I, I have another idea that I'd like to talk to you when we have a little more time. And it's about training people, local people, instead of trying to get them from somewhere else. So it's an idea I've got now. I'd like to work with you.
Yeah. And just, just to be clear, we're doing a lot of things to help existing seekers get the skills they need and make the connection from where they are to where they might be. And we're advertising on buses, for instance. There's 30 best advertisements right now that really have a roadmap of getting a seeker who perhaps doesn't even have a high school equivalency to understand that there's three places that they could get that. When they get that, we want them to go ahead and sign up with Job Connect to see if they can get work. Once they get work, we want them to continue their education through the programs at the community college level, certificate programs, the P3, Panasonic 3 Training Program, for instance, at, at Truckee Meadows Community College. So we're doing things to help move people that may not be in the workforce today and get them connected with many of these resources, in addition to attracting some skilled talent that we need to fulfill some of the jobs, that we don't have enough people today, even with all of our graduates and with, with all of our programs, in order to make sure that we have the people to fill those jobs as well. So happy to speak with you again and listen to additional ideas you may have.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Mrs. McCormick. We really appreciate the presentation today and all the work that you've been doing at EDON. It's very, very uplifting, what EDON has brought to our community. So continue the good work.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Manager, we are on to, agenda item eight, please. And you know, before we get started with this item, I'd like to announce we're going to take a lunch break at, at the finality of item eight for, for legal meeting slash lunch. And we will try to be back here at 1:30 in conclusion. So Mr. Green, with that being said.
Mr. Chair, as Chief Deputy Green comes to the podium, I'll just announce this item. This is a presentation for, and fiscal year 18, first quarter status update for Washoe County Regional Attention Facility to include security of the jail, conditions of confinement, and medical care of inmates housed at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office.
And before you get started, for the record, I have a handout from Mr. Green, which I'll distribute. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Green. I shouldn't say deputy. Chief Deputy.
Thank you, Mr. Should I, no, do you push this button?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nope, try again. Push it one more time.
How about now?
Oh, yeah. Now we got you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the County Commission, Mr. Manager, my name is Tom Green. I'm a chief deputy at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. I am in charge of the Consolidated Jail, and I'm here to provide you an ongoing quarterly report, as required by statute, that the board will inquire as to the security and welfare of the inmates at the jail. We believe this suffices that, is that inquiry. As the Commission is well aware, the Washoe County Consolidated Jail was opened in 1988 with a bed capacity of 448 beds. In 1999, an additional wing was added, which created an additional 256-bed, open bay dorm-style unit, which consisted of four pods. Again, in 2008, the facility, facility expanded to include three additional units, a medical triage center, an e-kitchen, and a laundry facility. That last expansion, coupled with double bunking, has raised the total bunk capacity in the jail to 1301. Our population today is 1088, just in perspective. The jails maintain an average daily population, which we measure of 100, of 1,087 during this fiscal year, and we're on track to book over 22,000 people during 2017. That average daily population has increased slightly at 1.87% over the previous year. Now, that number may sound small. That equals about 20 inmates. When that's extrapolated out a year, if that were to persist for an entire year, it's a little over $900,000 in, in hard, actual costs that we can, that we can point to. Staffing, it's been a challenge, both in our authorized totals and our recruitment and retention, much like we've seen in law enforcement across, across the country. We've hired some 134 deputy sheriffs in the past five years. We've hired some 134 deputy sheriffs in the past five years, and our budgeted allotment of deputy sheriffs has remained flat since fiscal year 1415. To properly staff that facility, overtime is used at an alarming rate. The next piece is -- too many clicks. Apologize. Next piece is on security. And security is a difficult subject to really wrap your head around because it's multifaceted. For the purposes of this report, I'm going to focus on the physical security of the jail. The most fundamental purpose of a jail is to secure prisoners and prevent their escape. After some challenging escapes in the late '90s and early 2000s, we took some measures, and we have not had an escape since 2002 from secure custody at the jail. We take that security piece seriously, and we have checks and balances in place that have prevented any such escape for the past 15 years. Physical improvements to include increased cameras, window mesh, additional gates, added razor wire, and improved locks have all occurred since that 2002 escape. Other important components of security include the safety of the staff, visitors, and the safety of the inmates. Despite in excess of a half a million people booked into the jail in the last 25 years, facilities never suffered an incustody murder, and violent inmate-on-inmate attacks are rare. Staff are generally equally safe, with significant attacks on staff rare. Facility has noted an uptick in both inmate-on-inmate batteries and inmate-on-staff batteries this past three years. We believe that coincides with a more violent population and an increase of gang-affiliated One of the commissioners brought it up earlier, that the facility is aging, and although it is well-maintained, it faces challenges. Some of those challenges include the need to replace worn locks, doors, sinks, toilets, cameras. Other CIP projects that CSD is working on as we speak include roofing and HVAC improvements in the facility. This is the largest contiguous building that Washoe County owns, within excess of over a million square feet, and it's one of the few that really sees that continuous use 24/7. And as you can imagine, everything in a jail is more expensive, a door, a sink, you can just add zeros to the end of it. The next piece will be the welfare of the inmates. Again, this is a multifaceted look at things in the jail, but in a custodial setting, it's really best measured by several factors, to include the health of the inmates, their access to medical care, infectious disease and vermin control, food services, environmental controls, the safety of the inmates, and the out-of-cell time. Each of these important components could be a measure of the overall welfare of the inmate population. For this report, I'll focus on the health of the inmates and their access to medical care. The population of this jail, not unlike other jails in other communities, is generally an healthier, an unhealthier population. If you were to take a traditional sampling of the public, we're going to be a much unhealthier population by percentage. This unhealthy population often has poor nutrition, poor hygiene, and a lack of patient responsibility when it comes to medical issues. The same people that are out using illicit drugs and committing crimes are much less likely to have the personal responsibility needed to lead a healthy lifestyle. Our contracted medical doctor for the Washoe County Jail, who's been a practicing physician in this community for 25 years and a doctor since 1978, describes nearly half of our jail population is extremely ill. As of August, again, this is a quarterly report, so these are snapshot numbers from this last quarter. As of August 2017, 802 inmates were under treatment for a chronic medical condition. That could be anything from high blood pressure, diabetes, heart disease, some other chronic condition that they would normally see a physician for. During the month of August 2017, 551 inmates were receiving some type of medication while in jail, and staggering 261 were on some sort of mental health medication. Just in the month of August, 440 inmates were seen by a mental health professional. Now, that isn't a licensed clinical social worker or a psychiatrist. In the month of August, 188 inmates were on an alcohol detox program, while 152 were on an opioid withdrawal protocol. That was up from 127 in June, so we're seeing the effects of the opioid crisis in the jail as well. The contracted medical provider, NAF Care, they logged some 7,700 hours of staff time during that 30-day period from June 30th to July 30th, 2017. The medical contract with NAF Care was extended in June 2017, set to expire in May of 2018, and the impetus of this was to provide that continuous care while a request for proposal was developed. As far as staffing goes, a little bit of snapshot into staffing. Our total authorized deputy sheriffs for the detention center itself is 210. We currently have 208. Of that 210, 162 of those deputies are designated for operations. And what operations is, is that is the housing units, the intake area, that's the day-to-day operation of the detention facility. The other 48 are assigned to services, which includes all the security posts down at District Court, the inmate management unit, the administrative services unit, anything that is not a line function. As of September 26, 2017, there are 11 people just unavailable to work the line. That could be maternity leave, extended military, or extended medical, military leave. In addition, we have five that are assigned out to patrol to attend that training program to augment the patrol division when there's vacancies. Just for clarification, it takes about 5.2 deputy sheriffs for each 24/7 post that we have to fill those. This leaves 149 available for the line. So each day, minimum staffing to operate the jail is not met. It's before any sick calls, training leave, vacation leave. The result is overtime backfill, which during this quarter alone totaled over $615,000. That is from our $1.274 million budget authority. So as you can see, just in that quarter, it's not bad. I want to be mindful of your time. I wanted to break down the demographics of the jail because I think that is of interest to the public and to you as well. The first slide is based on race and ethnicity. Now, this is based on reporting from the inmate, so we're just relying on the data that we get back. As you can see, the bulk of the population of the jail is white, as is the bulk of the population of our community. It's fairly reflective for both white and Hispanic. There is some disparity in the representation of African-Americans in the jail. Community is 2.69%, and the detention facility is 14%. The next slide is on age. As you would figure, the 20- to 39 bracket of folks are the ones committing the most crime and ended up in jail. They account for about 65% of that total inmate population. And the last slide, this one's a little hard to see, but generally it's just showing you a piece of the -- it's showing a pie chart of the makeup of the inmates in the jail as far as their charges, what their classification levels are. So this is kind of showing that we've had an increase in higher-level inmates. And then the last, the last two slides are on average daily population, which I've already talked about and you have in your handouts, but it gives you some historical perspectives. And again, that average daily population fluctuates every year. It fluctuates with the weather and special events and other things that are occurring. Average length of stay as well is on here, and that's stayed basically the same. In fact, it dropped just a touch, and that's the average length of days, jail bed days that somebody is individually booked in and stays for. I apologize I went a little bit long, but I entertain any questions you have.
Commissioner Herten.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Green, thank you. Great presentation, and as I mentioned the other day, the jail symposium was very good. The question that I have is, is it possible potentially to work backwards with the city of Reno with the proposed bid assessments and possibly work with those ambassadors? I mean, every single person that, one that we can keep out of the detention facility is one less that we have to deal with. So that's the, you know, that's the first question. But is there a way, and Commissioner Jung mentioned deputies Player and Marston, who are great advocates in trying to keep people out of the facility and moving in the right direction, keep them sober, working, et cetera, which means we don't have to care for them in the general population of the detention facility. But the real question is, is there a way, and I'm not really looking for an answer, but is there a way that we can possibly work with the downtown corps? Because what you didn't give us in the metrics was, and I think that this would be a useful metric, how many people are coming from the city of Reno? How many people are coming from the city of Sparks? How many people are coming from Washoe County? And I think that that's a simple metric to probably include at some point, so that we know, you know, where the bulk are coming from. And I think just by general population, and this is not a pejorative comment again about what's happening in the city of Reno, they're just larger. They have a larger net population than does the city of Sparks or the unincorporated area of the county, which the sheriff would be responsible for. So it'd be nice to see that metric. And again, how can, how can we work as a group to funnel people a different direction as opposed to just straight into the population of the detention facility? And also, it would be nice, at some point, I brought this up earlier, to have this conversation about cost recovery for booking inmates. And maybe even some of that cost recovery can be placed on some of the inmates. I don't know whether we currently do that, and perhaps you can speak briefly to that, but the example would be is if they have insurance, or can we recover a portion of it? Everybody is supposed to have insurance through the Affordable Care Act, and so consequently, if we're providing care for them, are we billing for that care, you know, back to and through the Affordable Care Act? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. You should be on.
I'm back on. Okay. Well, there's a couple of questions there. I will work on that metrics that you talked about. We have that statistical data, and each quarter will morph this into what the board is desiring as far as statistical data, because there is so much, I gotta just make a decision about what to present. Yeah, I liked what I heard about the ambassador program. I think it has value. My cynicism will tell me that more cops on the street, more enforcement areas or special districts equals more bookings for nuisance crimes. But on the flip side, I have two captains that are really innovative and engaging in the community and looking at ways to defer people before they ever get to our door. So I think those programs are going to be a good partnership with that downtown program. We'd certainly want to be at the table in any discussions with that happen.
And then one last question, if I may, Mr. Chairman, and not to step on a direction I'm sure you want to go. Is pretrial assessment working for you guys in keeping people out, you know, as opposed to having to spend 72 hours, you know, the people who are nonviolent offenders, so to speak, that we know aren't a flight risk? Is there a, is, are we seeing that that is a benefit, and are there things that the SO can suggest to make changes with respect to getting someone out of the system that doesn't really need to be there as quickly as possible?
I don't think I can get that button right here one of these times. I can't really tell if it's red or not. As to pretrial assessment, our analysis at this point has not concluded that it's beneficial or harmful to our inmate population as far as numbers. We have seen a slight increase in the amount of time people spend in booking. However, when that's weighed against the information that's available to judges, when they decide, when they make an individualized determination as to whether or not that person should be released on bail or on an OR, and if it is bail, what is that amount may outweigh that delay. We're still analyzing that information as we are a pilot site, but I can't tell you, it's been an increased workload on my civilian staff that deals with the booking piece, which is a problem for us, but we're working through that as we work through this pilot program.
So we are trying to fix one problem, but yet we've created another.
That could be.
In terms of staffing, and I get that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Herman.
Sorry. We're having trouble today, aren't we? You have the toughest job. I mean, you have taken on a job that is really hard. What I'd like to know, because I'm not the professional crime fighter or jail person, I would like to get from you, for us, maybe come back to us with a list of suggestions on how we can help, because you're the one that knows, how we can help from this side. Because I'm not sure even how to ask the right questions. So I'd like to hear it from you, what you need, what you think, and especially regarding funding, you know, us getting money back for, from the cities for what we're providing them. So I'd sure appreciate that. That would be great.
Don't touch it.
Sorry. I keep touching it. Yes, ma'am, I'll ponder that and get back to you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're like a kid with that thing.
I know. Sorry.
All right. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, sir, for being here. I just want to point out on the record that the pretrial services is not a way to reduce prison population. It's not what it was identified for. It was to make sure those people that need to be incarcerated for their safety or other people's safety remain there. And we don't, we had never thought to use pretrial services as a way to decrease jail population, just to make sure that we select those people that need this type of supervision. And that we are a beta site, so there will be a lot of changes based on how this plays out and what the data does say to us. But to the idea of what do you need, even when we went to the symposium, it was very obvious, you need money. And I want to point out, because it wasn't pointed out at the symposium, at least not before I had to leave, is that, to go to a meeting, is that you, the sheriff's office is before Sheriff Chuck Allen, was the only area that we did not cut when we went through the Great Recession. We preserved the heck out of the sheriff's department because public safety was tantamount in number one when we did citizen surveys. But I will agree with you, we have not then matched population and the changing population that we're getting, being that we are the largest mental health center in northern Nevada, sadly. So I want to go back to, make sure you bring it in line item. How much, how much does it cost? How do you propose where we get it? And also, have the attorneys with you, sooner rather than later, before the end of the year, look with you how that government services tax, what portion of it, you're not getting all of it, just so you know. Senior citizens need it, downtown, you know, but a portion of that, how that could be augmented and how you can make the nexus in terms of quality of life here. And maybe it's even starting a capital fund for a new jail construction and maybe taking our old jail and turning that into a homeless shelter. If, once we get that, I mean, I probably won't even be alive once that happens, but let's put it in the plans, right, so that we can see a turnover, because the excessive use of overtime is such a morale issue, as you well know. And people make mistakes when they're overworked, and this is a high-stress job that creates mistakes because you are not well-rested, you didn't get a time to de-escalate your own mind and body. So I do want to see you to come back with us honestly, what you think would be needed, especially considering that we're going to be getting a new sheriff. And I would like this commission to be much more involved in selecting contractors like NAF Care, much more involved in overseeing the proper channels, because it is a new day for Washoe County. The incumbent is not going to run, so we're going to have a new relationship with the new sheriff, and that would be so helpful, whether you are with the next administration or not, for, at least for me, to start. helpful, whether you are with the next administration or not, for, at least for me, to start at a baseline of where we can go from there. So I know that's a lot to ask you, but I, I'm sure you guys have a, a sense or an idea of a, a dollar figure and where, where it would best be served. So I look forward to seeing that, and I will work as hard as I can to get you that funding. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Chief Green, thank you for the presentation. We really appreciate you coming out today and spending time with us. I know there are some nuances to, well, there are a lot of nuances to running a jail that a lot of individuals, you know, me included, don't understand, because we're not there every day with you, and understand the challenges that you go through to operate the jail. I do know that the commissioners on this, on this dais, a number of us have, have taken extra time and, and spent time with you and spent time with our, our jail staff. We've also visited a number of organizations and jails and counties throughout western United States and the Midwest to look at operations and look at how we approach healthcare. As Commissioner Jung points out, you know, the jail is often referred to as the largest mental health facility in northern Nevada. And it is. And you, and it, and that's readily apparent through your stats. I think that as we have this continued discussion in, in whether it's pretrial risk assessment, whether it's, you know, medical healthcare and, and challenges that we see going forward, we need to have a continuous conversation of what, how those operations, because your, your, your role within the jail is tremendous. And I, I want to thank you first for all the work you do with operations, because as chief deputy and head of operations, underneath the sheriff, you do a phenomenal job with, with what you've given. And I know that there's always a request for, for more money and more staff and more challenges as we grow as a community. But also, you know, there are opportunities to look at these things from different operations. And I know this is, you know, we signed on to the stepping up initiative to deal with opioids and different things like that through, through NACO and have done that, and we need to continue to work on that and bring that into the jail and see how we're dealing with the opioid issues at the jail and those, through those, through stepping up initiatives. But we need to have these conversations not only with the jail and, and siloed departments, but with the courts and the DA's office and, and a number of our, our justice, justice departments throughout the county and how we're dealing with those populations. Because we are innovative. We've said, we've shown how innovative we are in regards to programs such as Crossroads and different things that we're doing through the Human Services Association, through the Human Services Agency. How do we go and, and help in decrease some of that mental healthcare within the jail? How do we, how do we better appropriate different people to different areas? So I know this commission is committed to, one, helping you through the healthcare processes as we move forward and, and whoever the next sheriff may be, and Sheriff Allen, while he continues to serve over through the next year. But I think we need to continue to have these conversations, because it's not just a singular, it's not just a singular issue, as you said, there's, it's multifaceted. There's many different things that deal with that, from health and human services to jail population, justice reform, and then obviously some of the major issues such as opioids and different things like that we're dealing with. So I appreciate your time today and, and, and those challenges. Commissioner Hartung.
Mr. Chairman. And, and, and I would like to understand this better. I thought pretrial assessment was to not only hold inmates and keep inmates where they needed to be, but also to stop inmates, people from, from, you know, let's just say a businessman who had one too many drinks, where he does not spend 72 hours in the, you know, in, in the facility. So, so the, the, when you come back to us, perhaps you can give us some metrics and, and, you know, talk to us about nonviolent offenders versus potentially violent offenders versus very violent offenders. And so that we can try to understand, is, are there ways that we can participate in, in, and even as, as Commissioner Jung talked about a new facility, maybe the new facility looks at, at, at that in a very different way. Maybe there's a, maybe there's a different way to, you know, to deal with, you know, sort of nonviolent offenders in the system. So I, and, and I don't know what the answers are. I, you know, but, but the question comes back to, when you have a higher population in the jail, requires more staffing, period. End of discussion. That's, I mean, that's, that's really, you know, and you are understaffed right now. And I think we have seen a, a higher propensity of very violent offenders. When, and the multiple tours that I've taken, it doesn't give me a great feeling to be there. It's a, you know, God bless you guys for, for the work that you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Manager Slatter.
Mr. Chair, just briefly, I want to thank Chief Deputy Green. We've worked with him on this report. This is, this will be the first of quarterly reports. So one of the things that we've talked about is if there's additional information, and a few things came up, if there's additional information that you'd like to see, metrics that you'd like to see in the report, just let me know, and I'll work with Chief Deputy to make sure we get those into the future reports.
Great. Thank you, manager. Appreciate it. All right. It is now 12:55, 12:56. We are going to be in recess for an hour. We'll probably be back right at 2 o'clock at this point. All right? Thank you very much.
We're getting our update on wildland fire season.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Charlie Moore, Fire Chief, Trekkie Meadows Fire. Yesterday, we suppressed a fire in Sun Valley, less than two acres. This illustrates how dry we still are, and we're currently combating a five-acre fire in the Warm Springs area along a ridg hill on BLM. So I've had a number of requests for open burning before the air quality restrictions kick in on November 1. I'm not approving those simply because it's, it's way too dry. And unless we get some appreciable moisture, we won't have an open burning period available to the public. Hopefully, I'm in contact with the NWS to see if there's any rain on the forecast, but they don't see any. So we are planning to do a green waste collection, though, for people, and I'll announce that at the Fire Commissioners Meeting in, in just a week. As I've let you know, we have two engines in California right now. Here's a series of slides that show you what they're doing. They're, they're doing structural protection and actively fighting brush fires. This is in the, well, the name of the area escapes me. But you can see how smoky the conditions are. Still a very dangerous situation in California. In fact, they're still calling northern Nevada for resources, and we're pretty much tapped out. We have sent one structural engine and one brush engine. That's about as much as we can afford to send without leaving some stations open. But I know that there's been a significant response from northern Nevada to the fire. Gives you an idea of the grassy fuels, which burn very, very quickly. And this is, again, structural protection of one home. So our thoughts and prayers are with the folks in California and all the firefighters there. It is a very, very bad situation. So that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate you taking the time to come and visit with us today and, and discuss kind of wildfire season. I know this has been an ongoing topic that we've asked for you to come and talk with, with us during the fire season, so we appreciate it. Commissioner Hartung is signed in at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, how close are we to having the burn box system ready?
It is ready to go now. I am actually drafting a letter to Mr. Dick at the Health District to request a waiver of the, the permit fee.
Sure.
For the use of the burn box, and so I'll know something by November. The nice thing about using the burn box incinerator is we can use it year-round, so there won't be an air quality restriction.
Right. That's good.
Come November 1.
Well, and I mean, the argument, obviously, in my opinion, would be that by using an item such as the burn box, we're potentially reducing the possibility that air quality could be horrible for days on end due to a wildland fire.
Agreed. And I think the Health District would agree, we have common goals in that program, that we could reduce air pollution into the valley, and we certainly increase fire safety by minimizing the number of pile burns that the public would do.
No, I, I think it's a great idea. We had some people in the Wadsworth area at the East Trekkie Canyon Cab asking about being able to do open burning, and Chief Kukulus mentioned the, mentioned the burn box and that we're working on that, and they're, they're excited to see it. So I'm not convinced that one is going to suffice throughout the county. I think, I think you'll find that we'll probably have to, to purchase a couple more so that you can sort of, you know, spread them out, especially during seasons when people really do need to clear out vegetation.
I'll have a little more to announce about the green waste collection program that TM plans to do, so it won't necessarily be dependent on how many burn boxes that we can obtain, but more of a, a system of collecting, collecting green waste and bringing it to a central area. We can, where we can either compost it, chip it.
I see.
And/or burn it. So I, I see two burn boxes, one north and one south, in, in the future, but one's going to get us going, certainly.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, I just want to tell you, thank you very much for not opening, free burning, open burning, whatever they want to call it. I, it terrifies me to think that we could be in the same situation that is going on in Napa right now. Some of the scenes of some of the development areas that were completely burned down simply because of the wind. And, you know, yesterday's wind was not nice here either. So I, it does concern me that we would open up, open burning, and I appreciate you keeping it closed. Thank you. Thank you for everything else, also.
You're welcome, Commissioner. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate your report today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we will take item 17. Mr. Manager.
Item 17 is an update and direction to staff on the Waste Management Franchise Agreement and possible related matters.
Ms. Thomas.
Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, Kate Thomas. Nice to see you, Commissioners and Mr. Manager. Here to present an update on the Waste Management Franchise Agreement. We'll go ahead and start off with a little bit of history. I'm sure you're aware of the timeline that in November on the 29th, you signed a new franchise agreement. Want to clear up the fact that there is an existing agreement in place, there's been some ambiguity around that. And that there was also a comment about extending it. We're not here to do that. We're just giving you an update on the existing agreement that sits in place, that was rolled out in February of 2017. Not without challenges, that's to be sure. There were weather issues. I know there were communication issues with materials that were presented to customers, the receipt of the stickers and things like delays in dropping off cans, things of that nature. So not here to make any excuses for that, but continue to focus forward. And you received an update in January and April on the status of the agreement. What I'd like to do today is go over the remaining issue areas. I've broken them down into some categories so that it's easy for us to kind of delve in on the areas that I feel still remain. Now, I'm relatively new to the process. I've done as much research as I can, pulling up the issues that were initially presented to the commission, issues that have come forward in Washoe 311, issues that have presented to waste management, excuse me. And what we have here are some of the remaining issue areas that I'd like to focus on. So communication is the first of those areas, and we had a little bit of rate confusion. We talked about billing issues. We've seen some calls coming in about the rate in Washoe County versus other jurisdictions, vacant properties when they're transferred, what the process is around that structure. And so I'd like to focus on what we've done to continue to clear up the communication issues. So we've worked closely with Waste Management to put up forward a situation where, when there are inclement weather situations, we can have a call-out system. As long as Waste Management has your number on file, we can push out information to customers around inclement weather. When there's a bad snow day, we've got an issue with the road, we can push that, proactively push that information out so that we can say, hey, we're not going to be able to get to your service area today. Put the cans out tomorrow, or we'll get them next week, whatever Waste Management strategy around that is, working with us and the plowing and the road situations, we can then proactively communicate to constituents, which I know has been an issue in the past. There've been some comments about the fact that we have an out-of-state call center, and we are working through that with the presence at Waste Management of an ombudsman, as well as some staffing changes internally, that we're hoping will help bridge the gap between the Phoenix Call Center and the fact that we've got issues here in Washoe County. So we're continuing to watch that one closely. There's not been the ombudsman brought on staff yet, but again, I think Mr. Martinelli may touch on later how we're proactively working together. We'll continue to meet on a monthly basis with Waste Management to make sure that any issues coming in are being addressed as well. I did put together a one-page informational sheet, hoping to give, and I know it's small up here, but you have a copy of it in your staff report, hoping to give everybody some information in a consolidated fashion. So what we've got is items, large items, how you can dispose of washers, dryers, things you can take to landfill, landfill or the transfer station, what you can recycle at no extra cost, as well as what you can do with excess waste by placing bags at the curb during trash day with your stickers, or during those two extra days of collection in the spring and the fall. So I've put together this information around wildlife carts, free dump access, and then we've got a household hazardous waste event that's coming up in November. And Mr. Martinelli, Mr. Martinelli can focus on what we would be collecting during that event, which is a new thing to this region, and I think very useful to get rid of some of those hot, toxic items. We're looking at introducing a new smaller container. That's one of the first action items before you today. So the introduction of a 32-gallon container that's smaller for households that don't generate as much, or some of those households that we've heard from would like a little bit more agility in their cart. Thank you. Sorry, I think I'm getting that cold that's raging through my household. So the smaller container would be at a reduced rate of 1,850 per month. And that would swap out your existing trash container that's not in addition to, but your recycle container would stay the same size because those collections are every other week. The other recommendation is a bulk sticker package. Right now, as I mentioned, we've got two extra months of service during May and November. You can put out six extra bags or bundles at the curb at no additional cost. And the idea behind that, as you're aware in the existing agreement, is to satisfy the spring and the fall excess waste around leaf drop, around trimming in, in advance of the summer season, things of that nature. So that existing extra service is there currently, and we're recommending adding an additional 50 stickers that you can use at any time for $104.40. So adding that to the franchise rate sheet as it exists is the second recommendation we're making. Last recommendation is a clarifying issue around billing. We've heard some comments around bills that are due upon receipt, and per the franchise agreement, Waste Management can set forward the, the structure for how they bill. The bills are due upon receipt, however, they're not delinquent until the end of the quarter, as you recognize Waste Management bills quarterly. So it wouldn't be until that 91st day that the bills would be delinquent. So we're hoping to clarify some of those questions that we've seen around billing. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the senior rate that was discussed in the last time that you heard this issue. We talked about, and in the existing franchise, there, there is a provision for a senior rate where 70, individuals 70 years or older can request from Waste Management a rate that's 85% of the franchise rate. There was some discussion, is my understanding, about putting in a senior franchise, or a senior tax rate, I believe it was. But without allocating any additional resources to the franchise or to the rate structure, right now, we're recommending that that senior rate as it exists, along with the addition of the reduced service at the 32- senior rate as it exists, along with the addition of the reduced service at the 32-gallon can, 'cause typically seniors do, not all of them, of course, but typically seniors do have a lower rate of generation, that that affords them some options that would give them some flexibility. And then lastly, we've heard about service waiver, we've had some folks who just wish to not participate in the Waste Management franchise as, as it's structured, that may be because they haul their own trash, they don't feel they need service, they own their own business, there are a lot of reasons for that, and that exists and has existed through the Health District, so individuals or households wishing to have alternative disposal can certainly reach out, there's a process for that, um, where they can request from the Health District a waiver of service, and there's a process where the Health District goes out and actually verifies that you have been disposing of your waste properly, the last thing we want is those items ending up in the open space and, um, or in your neighbor's trash can, or other issues that could be problematic for the franchise, and so, um, we've got that structure currently existing, uh, I wanted to make sure everybody is aware of it, so that's why we're highlighting it here, 'cause there has been past discussion around that. So, to summarize, we have three recommendations for you today, I'm sure you'll hear other or have questions, and we've got Mr. Martinelli here to answer those questions, however, I, uh, mentioned that we have the addition of a 32-gallon cart, which is that new reduced service rate to the franchise sheet, we have adding the discounted sticker package to give people year-round options with not having to have an extra can, but if they do have, um, fluctuations where they need to get rid of extra items, they've got those stickers, and then the addition of the billing language as your three recommended act- action items today. So, with that, um, I can take any questions, we can certainly hear public comment, whatever the Commission wishes.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take public comment first, and then bring it back to the Commissioners.
Cost of an extra can is how much?
Uh, do you want 64 gallon or 96?
96.
I didn't commit them all to memory, but it is...
Nor have I, and I'm sorry, 'cause I'm just trying to do a little bit of math, which would be three bags?
Three bags and a 96-gallon can, that's right. Um, so an extra, sorry, extra 96...
Seven something a week?
753 for an extra 96-gallon cart in the current franchise.
Uh, a week, or is that a month?
That's monthly.
That's a month?
Yeah.
753?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right. So, I'm gonna take, uh, public comment first, and then we'll bring it back to the Commissioners for further discussion.
Okay.
So, first I have Mrs. Tammy Holtzstill.
Tammy Holtzstill, for the record, I am speaking on this because of the fact that the, a lot of the residents had to leave because of where you placed it on the schedule and how long it took to get to it, uh, I think that's a little unfair to them, um, I'd also like to say that we went from having one, or having up to seven trashcans, now down to one trashcan, and for those people in the rural area, especially like my next-door neighbors who have horses and haven't been able to get rid of their horse manure, because they have no way of doing it unless they put it in a truck and trailer and get rid of it, they have no way of getting rid of it where they used to be able to get rid of it before. These are issues that one size does not fit all, what they have, what you guys have done with this Waste Management has caused lots of problems with the rural areas and livestock and that kind of stuff, and we're not in the city of Reno, we are not a city out in the rural areas, we are rural, we have different lifestyles, you know, being up in the pines, you know what it's like to have all the, the trees falling and stuff, so there's a lot of issues, and one size fits all does not work, and for there already to be one that's in place until 2020 and to decide to change it because all of a sudden you want this mainstream for the, uh, recycling, I don't care if I recycle or not, I'm sorry, it's not something I do, but to raise my rates because of it when, for no reason, is just absolutely crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holtzstill. Next I have Mr. Kevin Brett.
Hello. Kevin Brett, uh, I'm a resident at St. James Village, I'm also a board member of St. James Village, and I do represent the voices of many of the hundreds of people I know up there, and in surrounding areas, too, and, uh, even though we were put off a little bit, it's important that I thought I'd stay, gulp my lunch down and, and, uh, address the Commissioners. First of all, I think, uh, a lot of what Waste Management has proposed here is just a load of crap, and it's just not listening to their customers, me and my neighbors. What they're proposing here has nothing to do with the reason I came here in April, when I really believed and gave you some statistics, that their policies are gonna lead to an increased fire danger in all the mountain areas like the one I live in. This does not address that at all, all they have is 50 stickers at a discounted price, they should give us 100 stickers at no price, and that wouldn't be enough. I'll give you an example, St. James Village is very proactive in the fire danger, the board up there and the citizens are working very hard, we've worked with Chief Moore, I know him, and he's been very supportive of our efforts, in the month of June, right after we were allowed to put out extra bags in May at no extra charge, only six, should have been 60, we were proactive and rented four dumpsters over the month, the dumpsters are about 45 feet wide, and we filled them four times on top of all of the waste we were dumping weekly with the stickers, the 25 stickers we got for free, now they want to charge us for 50 without giving us the 25 they gave us in the first place. So, personally, and this is true, I loaded 100 bags out of my yard in June, and that's just one resident with a lot of pine trees on it, if I didn't do that, my defensible space would have been down to very little, and even now, I honestly could load up 100 more bags on my property, and I think that's pretty average for people that live in the pine tree areas, and the pine trees right now are loaded with dead leaves and pine needles, I mean, and the first big wind that comes along is gonna dump 'em down, so... I propose that Waste Management scraps this whole program of stickers completely, or gives the people that need them about 100, minimum, free stickers per year. We're not a one-size-fits-all community here in Reno and Washoe County, it just doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, Mr. Brett.
Okay, you're welcome.
Next I have Mr. Bill Majora.
Bill Majora from Virginia Foothills, I have three concerns about the proposed Waste Management deal, my biggest concern is fair value for garbage rate money, I emailed Chuck Moose's article about outside review of service contracts with local government to all five Commissioners, if you didn't read it, it wasn't because you didn't want to, or, it wasn't because you didn't have a chance. My second concern is more money for less service, my garbage rate went up about 5% with a reduction in service from seven bags of each pickup to the, uh, May and November cleanups plus some stickers, and I, in April, it was 25 free stickers, and I guess now it's gonna be 50 stickers at $100 and, $104 or whatever, either way, I think the customers are not getting fair value. For perspective, my independent garbage service for my house in the Bay Area went up 3% this year with no increase in service, and we also have the 96-gallon recycle carts, and I have the 96-gallon regular cart there, so I think Waste Management's taking advantage of you. The staff report with the April 25th agenda said that Waste Management would make any changes necessary, the Waste Management rep at the April meeting said that no one came even close to the old seven bags of extra garbage limit for all the pickups in the year. I think that the 5% garbage rate should cover, as a minimum, all the old service, no reduction in service, and if this is not possible, how about at least letting unincorporated Washoe County residents use all of the stickers they can get, beg, borrow, or, or swap, trade for, from anybody in Washoe County, Reno Sparks, whatever. The Waste Management's already given them out, they're kinda like cashing checks, I, I, I just don't see the inhibition about letting Waste Management get away with not taking stickers from whoever has them, as long as Waste Management issued them. My last concern, we need better notice about the May and November cleanup, now maybe the first year was an exception, but in May, I talked to my neighbors, and a large majority of them were not aware of the cleanup, they may have seen it in their notices at the beginning of the year, but they were no longer aware by May, and I had some of, some of my neighbors even put stickers on the bags they put out, like I had one neighbor put out two bags in May with stickers.
Thank you, Mr. Majora. Next I have Mrs. Kathy Brandhorst.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, and I am the United States President. Waste Management Franchise Agreement and Possible Related Matters, well, where I live, you probably can see this already, there's mattresses out there that have been there over a month, oh my God, also, the table has been sitting out there, uh, for over three months, oh my God, and also, the, um, trash, uh, that you see out there has been over there sitting for the Waste Management to be picked up, but that's also over three months, sitting in the, um, alley, oh my God, and I just wanted to tell you, you know, they cannot pick it up, because the people who put it out, put it out there, they don't live there, oh, so they're not gonna pick it up because I didn't put it out there, none of my neighbors put it out there because we all pay rent, the ones that don't live there and don't pay nothing are the ones that put it out there, so they're not gonna pick it up, the Waste Management, so it's gonna sit there, oh my God, also, I just wanted to let you know chopped heads are still going on in my area, and that's a chopped head that you're looking at right now, oh my God, and that person had to suffer because the electric chainsaw was very dull.
Ms. Brandhorst, I need you to stay on the topic of trash.
And they could not even cut the head properly.
You need to stay on the topic of trash, please.
Oh, that is the trash they, they threw in bags, is the chopped heads, one morning, I was standing, you know, uh, at my window, and I was watching the, um, Waste Management pick up the, uh, trash, he said, "You know what, I'm only picking up two garbage cans because the rest of them don't live here." And of course, they have to dump their garbage in my garbage can because they're not gonna pick it up, but they do pick mine up because I pay for mine. I just wanted to tell you, you know, living where I am, they opened up the bag, uh, the Waste Management, and there were all chopped heads in the, in that bag, oh my God, that bag must have been about that tall, even taller than me, and I don't know why this is still going on in my area, my territory, I hate it.
Thank you, Ms. Brandhorst. Next I have Mr. Danny Cleas.
Danny Cleas, for the record, for years, we've had the same service, put out your six bags or six extra cans in your regular ones, wasn't no issue, never had a missed pickup, always knew when the garbage truck was gonna come around, now we pay more money, less service, we gotta use these damn stickers that fall off the bags and then they don't get picked up. What's wrong here? Earlier this year, you guys talked about having somebody else come out, maybe have some competition for Waste Management, never heard anything else other than that. I don't know, every time I call Waste Management when they don't pick up my trash, they say, "Well, your can wasn't out," the ga- can gets put out at 3:00 in the morning, it's out there, they just drive by, why? But then we've talked to somebody, "Oh, we'll pick it up next week," "Well, my can's full of trash this week, what am I gonna do? Supposed to use my stickers for next week?" Nah, something has to be done with Waste Management, didn't have problems for years, talk about snow days and stuff, never had a problem in the wintertime, now all of a sudden, it's a big issue, now all of a sudden, less service, we pay more money, there's a problem with Waste Management, just like you guys in the springtime got mad at them, we need to find answers, what's the answers? We still haven't heard nothing about it, not good, so that means, somebody here, which would be the five of you, six of you, aren't on their butts getting answers for us out here, come on, do something, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleas. All right, seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board at this time. Madam Vice Chair, I have you signed in.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I, I, I guess probably I have a question for staff, Ms. Kate, if you don't mind answering my question, um...
Sure.
Who's gonna, on the customer waiver of service, somebody wants to waive their services, they're going to, um, they have to get their waiver application into the Health District and, and get it waived, who's gonna enforce this?
Thank you, Commissioner, right now, there's a, a formal application for exemption from garbage service that's allowed under the county code, um, the Health District is the one that grants that waiver, um, the provisions on the waiver commit that the person has to haul and dispose of their residential garbage and keep weekly receipts, um, they have listed their current number with, uh, current account number with Waste Management, so they can then verify that, I'm guessing, that they don't still have an account, or they'll drop their account, but, um, they have to haul not less than one every seven days and all of those sorts of things that are on this, on this exemption, um, I, the Health District is the one that grants the exemption, um, they are the ones, I would assume, that would be the ones that would enforce this, and I've got Jim, there he is, Jim English is here from the House District, and maybe he can talk about the formal process for how often they check back, uh, a lot of these, though, in, in previous areas that I've experienced, you have neighbors that self-enforce because there's an accumulation of trash or garbage at a residential household, and that is called in, and then it's determined that the person either didn't have an account, or it's, has sought an exemption and wasn't adequately disposing of the trash on a regular basis, so...
Okay, thank you, Ms., and I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas, I should...
No, you're fine.
Let's be polite here, so, um, I think what my concern is, is that, once the, the waiver has been granted, and then, what does a neighbor do if somebody doesn't, if they put their trash in the backyard and just keep piling it up in the backyard, how, I, that's when they go, they go to the Health District, the Sheriff Department doesn't enforce that, or the Police Department doesn't enforce that, the Health, they go to the Health District, and the Health District is supposed to come and enforce that?
Well, it would be like any other code violation, where you have the unlawful accumulation of trash, or cars, or whatever the issue is on your personal property, so we would start a ticket process, I mean, they, the neighbor could certainly call 311, and that would initiate a formal process where we could track these things and work with the Health Department, um, as well as the Community Services folks.
That's really a concern for me, and I live in the city of Reno, and have somebody on my block who's actually doing this, and it has been a joke trying to get it taken care of, I think we finally did get it answered, but it took about four months, I, I, I think the other thing that I want to say is, I agree with the proposed changes that you have in here, and I think they're all good, but I am also concerned... you have in here, and I think they're all good. But I am also concerned about the questions regarding rural areas, and I think some of those questions are really valid. You know, if you live in an area with lots of pine trees, you're cleaning up constantly, and you have to clean up constantly to make sure that everything's taken care of, and I do think that's a valid concern. As I understand it, though, it's 25 free and 50 extra that you would pay for. They're still going to get their free 25, right?
Yeah, those are delivered every January by Waste Management.
But if they want more, they have to pay more for the 50. And I do think that it is a valid concern in the rural areas. I don't know if there's something we can add to help, sort of help people live in rural areas, or people who have horses. I didn't know Waste Management picked up horse manure, so, I mean, that wasn't something that I knew. I know Commissioner Herman has talked about it in her neighborhood, but certainly in the areas on the backside of Collin Ranch and up the, out Mayberry and Bobby's, Mr. Chairman's, sorry, Mr. Chairman's constituents, who call me all the time because they think I'm their commissioner also, they really have a very grave concern. I understand their concern. I mean, they have lots of pine needles, lots of pine cones and everything, and it's a very big fire danger. So I think this is something we need to continue to look at and figure out how we're going to address this particular issue to help some of the other people. I know there's a lot of people, and we talked about this earlier, there's a lot of people who are just simply paying to have their yard cleaned by a service. There's some in my area that do that. There's some in Bob's area that do that. I'm sure there's some throughout the county that do that. But if you're a senior citizen and you live in that area, your home is paid for, maybe you can't afford to pay $2,000 a, you know, a year to have your yard. I don't know. I don't have any idea. But I do think that's an issue that maybe we need to continue looking at and try to work on to resolve.
If I might, this is a tough one, right? It's a rate-based system, so it's tough because you're paying for those people that generate more yard waste and so forth, or are now paying more. And I understand it's been a change, and that's been difficult, and it always is, so we'll continue to look at that.
But it's an improved system. I mean, there's no question that it's, there's, the new trash recycling, all of that stuff. I mean, I personally recycle everything. So from my perspective, I think it's an improved system, and I'm very happy with it. But, you know, you always pay more for an improved system, so it's one of the things we have to deal with. But I do think there are some concerns for people who have different types of property than those of us who live in a more urban area. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Thomas. You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Madam Clerk, I have you signed in for.
Hi. Yes, Mr. Chairman, the reason I signed in was I received a copy of an email that all of you received from Craig and Kathleen Smith, and if I just, if the board wanted, I can make it part of the record.
Please.
Thank you.
Please add that to the record. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to pounce on one side and play devil's advocate on the other. So, one of the issues that I've recently had, again, is playing customer service rep, and Mr. Martinelli, no one returned my call. I know Ms. Thomas and I both reached out to you about an issue. While it was resolved, I was not aware of what was going on, and it really was a misunderstanding, and so I will, I'll give you guys that. But I can hardly wait for the Ombudsman to come into play. One of the things I would like Waste Management to do, however, is I would like to see PSAs about the Ombudsman, about the free dump months, about the services, no different than we do at Tamwa. You know, we do PSAs at Tamwa all the time, and I think it's a great way to reach people who might not otherwise know about some of the changes with respect to the agreement. Having said that, I was recently having a conversation with a constituent, and they brought up something very, very interesting to me. And they said to me, "What other municipal service is not metered?" And I couldn't answer that question easily, other than perhaps, you know, sewer, but I think that sewer is coming at some point where I'm on a water meter at my home. I pay for every drop of water that I use, period. I don't know whether you guys have one, but I have an electric meter. I pay for every time I turn on my light. It's something that I, you know, that I pay for. With respect to my trash service, I pay for that. It's on a meter, it is metered. And the reason I asked for the per-month basis for a can, it comes out to $7.53 per month, or $90.36 a year, which is 144 bags for less than 100 bucks a year. I'm not a wealthy guy, but I can afford 100 bucks a year. And so while I do understand people on a fixed income, no argument there. I understand people who are on a limited income. I get that. But I happen to live on a large parcel. It's an acre and a third. I have no trees, but I assume responsibility for that, which is one of the reasons why we had the conversation earlier, some of you were in the room, when we talked about the burn box, because I'm very excited about seeing the burn box come into play, where a lot of the yard waste that is generated by my constituents who have larger parcels can be dealt with that way. Horse manure is a different color. You can burn it, but I'd prefer not to be in the neighborhood when you decide to do that. I'd like a notice of that, please. That is, that's quite true. But it's tough. Owners of horses, you know, equestrian uses in certain areas, that's a choice. The choice that I made with moving to a large parcel, that was, that's a choice. It's a conscious choice that I've made. If you've chosen to live in the trees, and by the way, my daughter and her significant other, they have a home both in Reno, and they spend a small period of time up in Truckee, that's something that they have to deal with. It's just, it's the nature of living in the trees. It's the, that's the hard part. With respect to getting other bids, we did talk to Republic Services. We did. The problem is, is they could not be competitive because they don't own a dump. That's the problem. It's not just this thing where you go, "Okay, well, let's open up a dump today." Commissioner Lucy and I have had the conversation about getting some land at some point where maybe, you know, who knows when in the future that might be able to change. However, at this time, our dump is owned by a private company, and it's actually not even in Washto County. It is in another county. So, you know, we're sort of tied there. But having said that, back on the opposite side, I do think that you guys can do a little better job with respect to customer service. I get a little frustrated with it. Ms. Thomas and I were very, very frustrated trying to help constituents. And by the way, that constituent didn't live in my district. It was in an outlying area, and they were just frustrated. So I would really like to see some intermediary sooner rather than later, and I would really not like to see, we need to have a local call center. We just need to. I know I've talked to other call centers, and we're trying to resolve this with some other issues. They have call centers elsewhere, and the particular call center that I'm referring to was in Colorado. They don't care. They truly don't care, and it's very frustrating for your customers, our constituents. And then when they feel like they have no other alternatives, then that's when they start calling us, and they start funneling those questions back to us. And, you know, needless to say, then we get angry, and we try to pull the hammer, and so it's a no-win situation. I mean, it truly is. It doesn't, it doesn't make happy customers. And the problem is, and I will agree with this, they have no alternatives. You know, it's no different than Sierra Pacific, or Envy Energy, and I'm not begging anybody, but if I decide that I don't want to use their service any longer, their products, I have no choice, other than maybe go buy a Tesla battery wall and do solar. Right, right. It's a, you know, it's a fairly drawn-out process. But there is no choice. And so it's incumbent upon us to force that good customer service, and for you guys to, you know, to be a little more proactive as opposed to reactive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harton. Commissioner Herman.
Mr. Martinelli and I have had some long chats about some of my rural people in District Five, and I've also heard from folks that are out of District Five but still were in the same kind of situation where they were very unhappy with that service. We talked about the possibility of removing certain areas if there was continued problems to remove certain areas from the franchise agreement. But it's not in this agreement. But I would sure like to see an option for that. Probably have to be written very legally and everything, but I'd really like to see that in there, in our agreement. Because just like everybody has said, the rules are different. Some areas are definitely different. I see quite a few improvements and that sort of thing. I feel like one of the biggest gripes for most of my area is the bags. They always end up getting torn open by some dogs, or coyotes, or something like that, and so the garbage gets strewn all over the place. That seems to be a big, big problem, and a lot of people didn't get their little stickers, and I'm one of them. So, you know, there's got to be that option if an entire area decided they wanted to remove themselves from the franchise. I would really like to see that option in there with certain conditions, of course. I mean, like a majority of the people in that district would petition and desire that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. All right. Sure. Commissioner Young now signed in.
Hi, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak. My.
You're lucky.
About 99, you're already going to tell me I'm lucky. 99% of my district is in city proper, either Sparks or Reno. So I don't have a lot of dog in this fight, so to speak. But one thing I will insist upon as a representative for both unincorporated county and both cities, we are not to subsidize other people because of their lifestyle choices. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's, I don't think it's sustainable. And, you know, that, the franchise fees we get, we get to dump back into our general fund and do improvements for the county at large. So if other people are going to then say, "I don't want to do this," and we want a whole swath of area out here, I don't want that going to General Fund anymore. They don't get to benefit from that. I want that to go to special, whatever we can do, because we get a, I think this is something that's hard for people to understand that hasn't done government. The reason why we have a franchise agreement with something so important as Waste Management is because if we had competition, and one area is much more likely to generate less trash, that's where this Waste Management would go, much like we used to have with ambulance services. And this is a public health issue, because if we don't have mandatory trash pickup, you now have a public health problem with debris and all of the other things that go into garbage, rodents and wildlife. So it might seem like a monopoly, but it's a monopoly that is actually in the public's best interest, especially considering there is no competition here. Nobody could handle this amount of waste. Waste Management here in northern Nevada is very different. It's probably the worst model, and that's none of their fault. It's just the way it was inherited, in which the Waste Management company owns the actual landfill. So they have such a competitive advantage than those that would try to haul debris out there that have to then pay the fee to leave their debris there. It also is not the best model, and it's not going to change, because we can't do takings of people's property rights and ownership. But it has not been, it's not the best practice either, because they're not incentivized to recycle, because it's cheaper for them, especially in the commodities market, where the plastic goes up, glass goes down. It's a nightmare, really. But they would be incentivized had they not owned the Waste Management transfer station and the actual landfill, because they would be paying to dump said debris. So I know that was long-winded to say that I really don't have a lot of people concerned with this at this point. I'm sorry that I'm so lucky. I just happen to live in the best district. And, just kidding. So, but I am concerned as myself, as a rate payer, that I am not subsidizing others. And to a large extent, we are subsidizing others, because it doesn't take as much gas to go to my place right downtown and back to the transfer station as it does to go out to Vaughn Hartung's place. So there is a certain extent that we are, and that's okay. I'm okay with that. But not at the point that you're used to not having to pay for your bags of all your pine needles. I'm sorry, that's something, that's a choice you make. It's a lifestyle choice, and you have to budget that as such. And we have a large parcel, believe it or not, and once a year, I have somebody come clean it up, because it's just too much. So that's, those are my two cents in that, Mr. Chairman, and I will support whatever this body would like to do. Thank you.
We appreciate the comments. Commissioner Young. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just very briefly, I want to say, as a former utility employee, putting a call center in every community is a financial impossibility for a private company. And so I know it's better here for us. We would like to think it's better, but I can tell you from the perspective of somebody who worked for Charter Communications for many years, and AT&amp;T, and TCI before that, it is very, very expensive to run a call center, and to put a call center in every single community would cost us the user, the end user, far more than we're paying now. And so I just put that on the record, because I think it's important that although we would like to have some things, we have to look at what the greater good for the end user is going to be. So, and that's definitely one. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for.
Thank you. Commissioner Harton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not looking to pick a fight with Commissioner Burke Bigley by any stretch. I agree, and I understand. With respect to Charter, though, when I call them, I technically, I need, most typically, I need technical advice, and so it's a different level of person than to say, you know, I mean, they have to be highly trained, and this is not a mean-spirited comment. It's just, it's something that's slightly different. I do think, however, that once we institute the Ombudsman, that could potentially take over as the local call center. And because what my hope would be is that the call center would funnel those calls directly to the Ombudsman. That would, that's, that would be how I would see it, so that the Ombudsman could take care of the issue locally. So it would somewhat intermesh and interweave as a local contact. That's what that person will act as. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else want to talk? Sure. Okay. Thank you. Don't touch that, don't touch that iPad. Okay. So here's what I have. I have a couple of questions for Mr. Martinelli and staff. I have a question in regards to bulk sticker package. First comment is that sticker package is what I've asked, through discussions, Mr. Martinelli, we've discussed that the sticker package is not our favorite, has not, but is that staying around, or is it going?
Mr. Chairman, Greg Martinelli, on behalf of Waste Management, on the temporary basis it will be. Our desire is to use technology so that they can go bye-bye.
Okay.
And essentially, you know, the account would have a credit on it of whatever. If they have 75 stickers, they would have a credit on that. When the extra service is picked up, it would be taken off of the credit that's on their account. That's where the technology is going.
Perfect. And that's what I wanted to hear, because basically, what we've heard from Mr. Cleas and some of these different things, stickers are worthless. They're a challenge. They're a pain in the ass. They just never work. It seems to be constant problems with those in the bags. So, being that being said, and I'm going to be, I'm going to speak in plain speak. I'm not going to try to be too PC today. I look at this bulk sticker package of additional 50. I look at this bulk sticker package of additional fifty stickers for a hundred and four dollars and forty cents. To my math, three bags, or three thirty-two gallon bags, will fit into one ninety-six gallon toter. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, probably more, but yeah.
And we pay, you can get an additional ninety-six gallon toter for seven fifty, seven dollars and fifty-three a month. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. At seven dollars and fifty-three cents per quarter, that comes out to twenty-two and change, is what we added up? Twenty-two and change, just shy of a hundred bucks for a, just shy of a hundred bucks for a toter for a year. If I were to buy a hundred and four, spend a hundred and four dollars and get fifty stickers, those fifty stickers would amount to the same amount of just sixteen weeks of service. And so, that doesn't make any sense to me. And so, I want to know how we got to the hundred and four dollars for fifty stickers because that's kind of a challenge for me in math.
What the, what the message there is, you get the extra cart. Then it takes care of Commissioner Herman's concern where animals are getting in and tearing up the bags.
Yeah, but, okay. And I appreciate that. I appreciate you trying to, you're trying to...
Containerize the waste stream is what it's called.
Containerize the waste stream so that you, it's easier for your individuals to manipulate it through the trash. I understand that. However...
That's kind of a misrepresentation.
Well, not that.
It's cheaper for everyone if the driver doesn't get out of the truck.
But we've always established that the new machines, the new trucks, which is what are tearing up the rural roads in the wet year because of their size, have automated arms. It's easier for them to manipulate a toter versus having the individuals get out and have to handle bags, correct? Because the articulating arm cannot handle a bag.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so that's the incentive, we're trying to incentivize individuals to move away from bags and into toters. The problem with, the problem that I see with incentivizing toters is that individuals have a certain limited amount of space at their homes. I mean, a ninety-six toter, no matter what size your acreage is, so they're big things to store somewhere, store somewhere close to your house, or store somewhere that they're not, that they're protected and whatnot. I mean, I know they're weather resistant, but they're a challenge. I mean, it's not, it's not just something, it's not, it's like the size of a bookcase. You can't just put it just anywhere. And if you're trying to store it in your garage or wherever to keep it so that animals aren't getting into it, because we do live in northern Nevada where animals are smart and, you know, not just because they live in bear, there are places where raccoons push over, I've seen raccoons push over toters. I've seen different things. You know, so if you're trying to protect them, you got to put them in an area to protect them. That being said, so I still think the bulk sticker package is a little high. I know, I know, I've talked to Ms. Thomas about this a couple of times. In Incline Village, they get ninety-six stickers for the cost, and I don't know the delta between what we pay and they pay a month, but I know it's only, it's only a dollar or two based upon current service, and they get ninety-six stickers and we get twenty-four. So, I'd still like to see that increased stickers just for the basic services, what we're already paying for, until we do away with the stickers. But the other thing I want to talk about is, and I agree with Commissioner Hartung, you know, this is, living in certain areas of the community is a choice. Now, I took my trailer yesterday to, I'm very fortunate, I own a utility trailer, and so I was able to haul my stuff to the, and unload it myself after my meetings yesterday at four-thirty, and I sat in the transfer station line for about a half hour before and get on, I got my free dump. After, after they had to find me, they couldn't find my account, which I've been paying on, so I got to talk to you about that, not in your system somehow. But they allowed me to do my free dump, and I unloaded it. And I was responsible for my own material that I've created on my property. Now, not everybody has the luxury of having a utility trailer, I understand that, or the ability to haul one to and from. But there are services in this community that do haul trash. They do haul waste man, they do haul animal waste. Those are costs. Those are costs of owning a home, those are costs of owning animals, those are costs of, those are costs. And if you think that that's the responsibility of the county or the individuals that we should bear the brunt of that, I don't think that's right. We're here to make sure that you provide a service to the residents, provide waste management and removal of garbage. But to provide landscape removal and pine needle management, it's not, that's not everybody. A lot of individuals in Arrow Creek, Hidden Valley, a number of my residents take responsibility for doing their own maintenance of their property. A lot of people I know own homes, horses, and do that. Haul their own garbage and their animal waste away. Or pay for somebody to remove it. It is not the responsibility of waste management. But it is the problem that if you're going to offer a service and you're going to make sure that those services available to, that there isn't any customer service problems, we talked about this on ombudsman for a long time. Now, I don't think a call center is what we need, but we do need an individual so that this commission, the manager's office, the assistant county manager, no longer has to be the customer service. Our 3-1-1 should not be the customer service file or call center for waste management. We shouldn't have to call you with our issues and challenges. We shouldn't have to have this problem. This is something that should have been rectified back in February. And some sort of ombudsman, some sort we can talk to immediately. This has been a discussion that's gone long, long too far. And we're willing to meet you halfway, but we need to have that discussion about what's reasonable, what's fair. And so, I have a quick question to you. What was Waste Management annual earnings as a company nationwide last year? Do you know that?
I'm not quite sure how that's germane to anything. It's a thirteen billion dollar corporation.
Thirteen billion dollar corporation.
Yeah. Do you want me to tell you what the, you want me to tell you what independent sanitation did?
Just a question.
Oh, okay.
I know, and I'm not saying that you're wrong or right. I'm just saying that we've had, with a corporation on your side, and it's not your fault. You're just the messenger.
I'm just, I'm the representative.
We're having a conversation. The point is, is that there's no reason why, if we've asked for an ombudsman, and that was part of the deal, that there's one that couldn't have been provided at some time in a company that large. And that customer service couldn't be increased for a company that large. You don't have competition here. We've tried to discuss this with you, and it's not you, and I keep saying you, but I think we've discussed this with Waste Management a number of times. And you hear the frustration, and it's, I understand the frustration from a lot of these folks. But I understand that there's reasonable costs that need to be paid by these individuals as well. And so, all I'm asking is meet us halfway. Meet us halfway with the customer service and make sure that that is, that is made sure that that is a priority and that is paramount as we move forward. Because that's what, that was the, that was the service that we came, became accustomed to with Waste Management. We always, prior to, that there was customer service and there was, there was an attention to detail. And it seems like that something's happened, and that's changed. So, all I'm asking is, as we move forward from this commissioner, that customer service become the number one priority. All the other stuff, the details, we can work out, but it's finding that customer service as soon as possible.
If you allow me, I can bring you up to speed on where we are with that. It's not that you've been ignored. Just finding a body is not the solution. We need the right body. And those interviews have not been successful. So, what we have done is, we've created a internal, separate email address for you. And that is where any of those escalated calls will go to that, that email box, either from your 3-1-1 or from our call center. And it'll be checked by one of three representatives, three times an hour. So, at every twenty minutes, they'll be checking that to make, see if there's any urgent matters that have come in that need to be addressed. Still looking for that right candidate, but in the meantime, there's somebody providing the function, as Commissioner Hartung had mentioned, that there's somebody here locally handling that local matter that's been escalated.
Okay. And what's the timeline? Do you think that you feel like the technology, we talked about in regards to the bags, how long do we, can we anticipate the bags being a...
You know, I'm not sure. We're testing it in Oakland right now. We've got it on half a dozen trucks. It's paying dividends, it's, there's still some hiccups to work out, but, you know, I would suspect probably within ten or twelve months that it'll be perfected to the point we can use it. So, hopefully by the time we have to mail 2019 stickers.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Martinelli. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Martinelli, would, do you see an issue with doing PSAs? And let me tell you what the benefit is, you know, from my perspective, and maybe I'm going to look at this completely the wrong way. Talking about Waste Management's recycling program, what you're doing to interact in the community, all the benefits of the changes that have been instituted regardless of the jurisdiction. And then talking, you know, again, just talking about waste management and how to, you know, how to deal with, you know, with some of the issues. And I go back to Tamwa. You know, I feel blessed, you know, Tamwa has a ninety-three percent approval rating, and it's taken them a long time to get that. The reason is, is because, and we know that people can't go somewhere else to get water. We're fully aware of that. And by the way, we're not the cheapest game in town. I happen to live in an area that uses a private water purveyor, and my water rates are cheaper than Tamwa's. So, I can tell you that, you know, the approval rating that Tamwa's getting is because of their proactive nature. I would say, as far as an ombudsman, I'll nominate Commissioner Jung. She'll be perfect. Kidding, Commissioner Jung. Scott's going to love this. Calls it two o'clock in the morning. I jest. But I think that there's, and I'm not trying to tell you guys how to do business, but I think that there's some parallel models that can be looked at with the way that Tamwa has done things in terms of their community outreach and, and I think that there's some real benefit for you guys to talk about your recycling program. Why should I recycle? What's the, you know, what's the benefit for me, you know, to teach my children about recycling? And if I am having problems, who do I contact? And the, you know, Tamwa uses this one all the time that people don't realize that only three percent of the water that flows by in the Truckee River is actually used by Tamwa. It would be interesting to know how much waste is actually generated locally, and these are the reasons why, and try to get people to understand the reasons behind your business model. I think, I think PSAs are the perfect way to reach out to people because I can tell you, this is just me personally, maybe people are different. I rarely read verbatim the inserts. I mean, I'll scan it and look for something, but I just, I just don't read those inserts. I'm sorry. I, I, I just don't. Unless there's something, you know, in giant red, you know, warning or, you know, something that I really need to know. I just scan those inserts and they go in my recycling. So, I would like, I'd actually like a vow from you that you guys will do some PSAs. Again, I think it'll be, I think it'll be a winner for you. I don't, I don't think that this will be some, you know, sort of lost cause of money down the drain for waste management. I think that this will be a great way to reach out to your, to your customer base. And like Commissioner Jung, not exactly like, but a huge part of my constituents live in the city of Sparks. They're, I don't have to deal with, with their franchise issues because that's all through the city of Sparks. But I know that there's people there that are unhappy, there's always going to be people that are unhappy. We just don't hear it here. So, that said, I'd really like to see some changes with respect to community outreach. I feel just like Commissioner Lucy does, and, you know, I do not want to be the customer service rep for Waste Management anymore. The pay is really lousy. I don't even give...
Especially then, I don't even have an account. They don't even know that I exist. Transfer station said, "Sorry, pull through, sir. You don't have any service with us." Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So, I, if I can...
Yes, please, Mr. Martinelli.
I need, I need to be able to comment to that. You know, and this is, this is really because Kitty asked for this. Years ago, she wanted to kind of improve the, improve the white male population at our company. And so, you know, we've hired Kendra, and much younger, and, and so Kendra's actually our communications person. So, the short answer to your question is, no, we don't object to it. And Kendra's actually working on a project that addresses just that very issue. I mean, it's a global thing because the contamination in all of Reno-Sparks-Washoe County in our recycling waste stream is horrendous. And so, there's, she's, she's got a program that she's working on. We have our own videographer. We can do our own PSAs, actually. And so, she's working on that.
And, and Ms. Costello-Mackey, I mean, you have wonderful camera presence. I mean, it's, I mean, this is, this is tailor-made for you. I think it's, I think it's appropriate. I mean, you're, you're spot on for this. I think you'd be a great face for Waste Management to get out there and do those PSAs. So, I'm, I look forward to that, Mr. Martinelli. I think that that's, I think it's going to be a real benefit to you guys. And, and I didn't, and see, this is one of the things that you can talk about. I didn't realize the contamination level that you guys are dealing with in terms of your recycling.
Yeah, it's significant.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further comments, Mr. Martinelli?
Oh, no. No, no, no. I've spoken too much already.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm positive.
Ms. Thomas, anything you'd like to add at this time?
I just wanted to remind the commission, sorry, Kate Thomas, for the record, that I believe you approved the waste characterization study that we'll look forward to getting the results from. To your point about looking at what the waste that's generated in our community comes from and what we can do to further increase the diversions from the landfill, so...
Thank you for...
That'll be a good holistic reminder.
Thank you for reminding us about that. Yeah, we did approve that in the first meeting in October, I mean, the first meeting in September in regards to that waste, the waste analyzation of what's going on. So, hopefully that'll provide some insight to what's happening. But, all right. So, this is for possible action. I think we've given plenty of direction to staff. Looking for a motion at this time. Do you want a motion? Do we need a motion, Mr. Leparelli? Do you want one?
Maybe Ms. Thomas can comment on whether she needs something from the commissioner, if she has enough to bring back the changes or the action that may be needed.
Thank you. There are three staff recommended changes before you that are summarized on the last slide of the presentation regarding the bulk sticker package, the addition of a thirty-two gallon can, and the billing language changes that I believe, and Mr. Leparelli can correct me if I'm wrong, that if the commission gives that direction, the manager can implement those changes to the franchise agreement? Maybe?
Mr. Chairman, I, the title for this item is, is pretty broad, so it would be better from a transparency standpoint, open meeting law standpoint, give direction, staff can bring back concrete changes for an up or down vote. That way, everybody concerned knows what the language is and what the changes are.
Okay. So, let's, we'll just leave it at that. You've got plenty of direction. We'll bring it back to another meeting for further ratification of the agreement if, okay? All right. Seeing nothing further, we'll move on. We are now on to item eighteen. Mr. Manager.
Item eighteen is discussion update pursuant to commissioners' previous requests and our topics for future agendas. And Assistant County Manager Dave Solero is here. On this item, you should have a report, hard copy of a report. Just one mention, we have talked about this report a little bit. It's evolved. We are, we would prefer that perhaps this goes to a quarterly, on a quarterly basis rather than monthly. So, I'll let Mr. Solero comment further.
Good afternoon. For the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager. As the county manager discussed, one of the improvements that we're trying to make through this whole process is a quarterly discussion, more in-depth with you all board members. As you'll recall, the three assistant county managers got together with you about a month ago to discuss kind of priorities and where we stand. All of that information is captured in here with the exception of Commissioner Herman. Like to sit down and really get that in-depth discussion with Commissioner Herman on priorities. But with some changes to 3-1-1 as well, helping us capture more of the response from your constituents themselves in the addition of different districts, as well as specific topics that we've had some time with 3-1-1 now to better capture, we think we can make this a much more robust report. Some of the items mentioned earlier by Commissioner Hartung, for instance, dashboard on speed complaints, where that fits, we are now capturing that information better within 3-1-1 so we can provide that information on a more timely basis. So, with that, you know, I don't know if you've got any questions related to this, this report, as we've pointed out here, to you with your priorities and kind of status where we're at.
Chris Hartung.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Solero. I looked at this, and it's certainly coming along nicely. One of the things that, that I would like to see, though, in this, in this request update is an additional line of anticipated completion. If there can be such a thing. Some, some things are ongoing, so, and that would be listed as such. But, but there are, there are some, there are some types of things that, that, you know, it's, it's like a bad cough. It just won't go away, and we, and we have no general ideas to when we would see some resolve to it. And, and I, you know, I think metering is one of the first things, and, you know, for the longest time, I don't feel like we were metering closely enough. And I think now we've started to meter it. But I think we should also, you know, no different than, than if you take your automobile in to be painted, they don't just tell you, "Well, we're not really sure when that's gonna be done." You know, there's a, there's an old joke that I'll tell you about a cobbler. I'll tell it to you offline, and it's not, it's not by any means something I can't talk about here, but it's just this constant ongoing process. And that's what I want to get away from. With respect to speed and 3-1-1, do we know what we're going to do with those? Are we going to interconnect with the SO so that, so that we can deal with? Some, some things, I mean, obviously, we, we can, we can look at planning and try to change traffic patterns, which, which is a, which is a really good resolve, because enforcement is short-term. I mean, if there's an issue, there's gonna continue to be an issue, and you have to change people's behavior before you can, you can get a resolve to that. But sometimes changing people's behavior means that we force them to either go a different direction, or literally physically force them to slow down via speed bumps, or, you know, certain types of, you know, speed-controlled devices that are, that are, you know, built into, to a roadway.
For the Commissioner through the chair, I'm afraid Mr. Liparelli may, may stop me at some point deliberating on some items, but certainly we can take that information in.
I guess what I'm asking for is, some things are gonna be enforcement-driven, and some things are gonna be planning-driven.
Correct. And I think working with the Sheriff's Office on those complaints as they come in through 3-1-1, we'll be able to at least get the enforcement piece first so that we understand whether it's an enforcement issue that can be dealt with-
Right.
-via enforcement, or whether there's some longer-term engineering or planning solution.
Right. And that, and that would be good. But, but in the interim, it would be good to know how those calls are being dealt with. Because I, you know that we have one fellow out in Spanish Springs that continues to call and continues to call, and he feels like he's not getting any resolve. And, and the issue just doesn't get taken care of. In fact, there's two roadways specifically where we've got, you know, issues on, and I, and I don't know what the solution is. I truly don't, other than, you know, literally blocking streets off and forcing them not to utilize them as throughways. So, it'd be, again, it would be nice. And then, and then just that, and there's, I'd just like to see, you know, estimated date of completion. And some things will certainly be ongoing. I mean, I get that. It's just, it's the nature of some, some types of requests.
And I do believe that the prioritization process is going to help us at least get these through so that they don't sit here and linger. We can focus our efforts on these.
A lot of sharp objects, really.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick question for you. Mr. Solero, I know that you are working with the DA's office on the issue of flooding and ditch maintenance. And I see on here that there's gonna be a memo issued on 11/14, and that the work is in progress, which is great. Thank you very much for that. Are we gonna do a public hearing? Or is it gonna be a public presentation on the 14th, so that people who are questioning this can come and hear what's going on?
So, currently, what we're, what we're anticipating is a memo directly to the Board members to give you an informational update on where we stand with some of these things. There are some legal issues that we're still trying to work through. So, it's too early to have a public hearing as far as-
Okay.
-you know, here are all the things. But we can certainly create a, you know, a one-sheet, something that we can get even with 3-1-1, so that they have the information available. A lot of the call is, "Are you ready for winter?" I mean, there's a lot of that discussion that we've got. And, you know, we've been working through that process. So, creating that information so that we can get it for the, for the public when they ask the questions as we work through this process.
All right, good. Thank you. Because, one, at the, at the meeting I had with the Collin Ranch Homeowners Association, they reminded me that the first flood and breaching of the Steamboat Ditch was in December of last year, and they're anticipating that same problem this year. And so, we do need to kind of give them some guidance on where we're at and what we're doing. So, thanks. I appreciate you working on it and putting up with me, asking you about it.
All right. Any further discussion in regards to this item? All right. Seeing nothing. Mr. Solero, you got enough direction?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah. All right, we're on to you, Mr. Manager. We're on to item 20. So, I will open the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, item 20 is a public hearing, and this is the second reading, possible action, adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 65 of the Washoe County Code.
All right. Madam Clerk.
All righty. This will be ordinance number 1601, an ordinance amending Chapter 65 of the Washoe County Code by expanding the permissible use of the 911 telephone line surcharge to include the purchase and maintenance of portable event recording devices and vehicular event recording devices in accordance with the 2017 Nevada Legislature's enactment of Senate Bill 176, by declaring the powers and duties of the 911 Emergency Response Advisory Committee by adding the definitions of law enforcement agency, portable event recording device, and vehicular event recording device, and by amending the advisory committee membership and terms of appointment. This was previously Bill Number 1785.
All right. Mr. Man, Chris Hartung.
I would move to adopt ordinance Number 1601, amending Chapter 65 of the Washoe County Code by expanding the permissible use of the 911 telephone line surcharge to include purchase and maintenance of portable and vehicular event recording devices, and all other matters properly relating thereto.
I'll second. Okay, I just have-
I have further discussion by Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. I just have a comment I need to put on the record, based on the fact that this is based on legislation. I've worked with staff on a comment that we need to put on the record on this, and the comment is, I believe there is an outstanding question of if the maintenance that is allowed to be funded by the E911 fund through the legislation would include staffing related to the body-worn cameras. Whereas, the dispatch portion of E911 funds clearly states that personnel may be paid for using these funds. That question should be considered when the final proposal comes back to the Board.
Okay.
So, that's at the request of our legislative staff that we get that on the record.
Great. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Hartung, further discussion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Liparelli, do we need to amend the action that we took today, or the motion that was made? Does it need to include and encompass Commissioner Brooke Bigler's statements?
I don't think so.
Mr. Chairman, the, the plan for implementing the bill has several phases. This is the first phase that really aims at the makeup of the committee and getting the committee off the ground. There are some questions yet to be answered about how much, what's, what's the new rate, and there are questions about the proper use of these funds. The bill is kind of crappy in that regard, and to use the vernacular. So, we're gonna have to do some guessing at some point about where the line is, and be prepared to support whatever decision the Board, the Board makes.
So, more detail, so, as I understand-
So, no, you don't have to amend the motion.
So, as I understand it, this is just the creation of the, this is the creation of the first process, the construct, and the more detailed will come along as we move through the process in regards to how that, based upon the recommendations of the Board that we're creating.
Further discussion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Liparelli, would this preclude us potentially looking at other sources of revenue to pay for this type of implementation? And I'm not talking about just for the SO, because as you're, you're aware, these fees have to go to the City of Sparks and City of Reno as well. I'm not sure, are we, to use the parlance, on the hook for the SO, or not the SO, the NHP? Or is that funded through the state? We don't have to fund our prorata share of NHP, is what I'm asking.
The, the authority that comes from the bill is for Washoe County to use surcharge money to implement the mandate to have body cams for law enforcement.
Correct.
So, whatever jurisdiction has a law enforcement branch has the obligation to, to have body cams in use by, by the deadline, which I believe is July 1st. So, this money is available for the funding of compliance with the mandate for local law enforcement. State of Nevada has its own.
Okay.
And just kind of to, to illustrate why this is a complicated, unclear issue, Clark County already has body cam, and they already have a separate funding source for it. So, they don't have to rely on 911 surcharge. So, Clark County legislators didn't really care too much about what this bill said, because it didn't apply to them. So, so we're gonna follow the first step, which is to change the complexion of the 911 Board to include the mandated positions, get that committee started with its work, and bring back the implementation of the rest of the program as, as they're ready to do that.
And, and just one more point of clarification. Will that only be for landlines, or will it also, can we also somehow try to include and look at VOIP?
I would have to guess. So, let me just say, we'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 You should note on the record-
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Let me, let me, let me apologize. Let me move back here. I have, on the record, I had no public comment, signed in for this item. And thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Once again, I'll call for the vote now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please cast your vote. Please affirm your vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right. That being said, we are on to our final public time. Mr. Manager.
Item 21 is public comment. Comment heard on this item is limited to three minutes per person, and may be, may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission's agenda.
All right. I have a few individuals signed in at this time. I have Mr. Ray Lake, who's no longer with us this afternoon, so I will go past Mr. Ray Lake. I have Ms. Kathy Brandhorse.
My name is Kathy Brandhorse, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to tell you, you know, the problem is still gonna exist, because a few of you are still from the border of Mexico. You have been in the United States more than a decade, which will be at least way back in the cave, men. Oh, my God. So, you pretty know what the United States is like. You know everything about the United States, and so you still refuse to leave the United States. There is not very many of you left, and I don't know why you keep coming back. It's been very hard to have you destroyed, because you do have the population all in the cemetery. The cemetery's growing very, very long, very wide, and we have now 12 miles of, in diameter, of the dead people, and all they were was mostly bullet holes. Oh, my God. Of course, you carry the machine guns from the border of Mexico. You do have the rifles, and that's reported from me, because my neighbors are from Mexico. Oh, my God. And so, they have the guns, the rifles, the high-powered rifles. They also have the handguns stolen from sheriffs, police officers. And they also have bows and arrows on the property. And they also have grenades and bombs-
Oh, my-
-on the property, so they can kill all the US military men and women, as many as they want to. Even though they're just citizens of the public, they are also buried in our area. And Mother of Sorrows is also cemetery, and it's also growing, and it's approximately seven to eight miles in diameter now. Oh, my God. So, you see, the more you kill and murder in the United States, we are very defensive, and you probably know it, because our US military don't know who you are. So, you're still alive, you're still here, and you're still causing more murders.
Next, I have Tammy, Ms. Tammy Holt still.
Tammy Holt still, for the record. One of the things I heard in the discussion on waste management was you were subsidizing the rural areas. It wasn't the idea of subsidizing. We had service of seven cans. We are now down to one can. So, and the cost for the one can has gone up compared to what we were. So, it's not subsidization, it is lack of service for increased price. There's a difference. The other thing I'd like to discuss again is the fact that the City of Reno has violated the, the contract that's out there, as far as the amount of affluent water they're supposed to be putting into Swan Lake, is only 2 million gallons a day. We know for a fact that they are putting in more than 2 gallons, 2 million gallons of water a day. Also, Washoe County's sewer plant is, and did, put in more than .5 million gallons a day, which is making that lake not be able to take on storm waters when the time comes. Then you add in, we had one resident talk about the HESCO barriers leaving. No. I understand why the HESCO barriers are there. I apologize that she doesn't understand it, but those HESCO barriers need to be there. That lake is gonna come out of its rim again, and we know it, you know it, and we understand it. What we don't understand and we don't like is the lack of services, again, for protecting those HESCO barriers. Residents in Antelope Valley and in the back part of Lemon Valley, when they're going down Lemon Drive, are passing on a blind curve. Where the HESCO barriers are at, on Lemon Drive, there is a curve between Tickety and Nectar, and people are passing on that blind curve. I was almost in an accident, and if it hadn't have been for the fact that I had been only doing 30 miles an hour, I was able to almost kill my truck, because it was a standard, by stepping on the brake, so that the man that was passing me could get back over, so he didn't hit the car that was coming at him, because he was in the wrong lane. So, it needs more servicing out there. I know we don't have it, but you need to do something, because those HESCO barriers need to be there, and those residents in Washoe County need to be prepared for what's gonna happen this winter. Okay?
Thank you. Mr. Danny Cleas.
Well, my name's Danny Cleas, like always. Pretty much the same thing Tammy- Pretty much the same thing Tammy said, except we had more service, less money. Now we're paying more money, less service with waste management. We're not asking to do something totally off the wall. Go back to where it was. We were recycling. We had baskets that we had to drag out there every week. We had our bags, extra bags, every week. We didn't get charged for them. It was $59 for three months. Now we're paying almost 80 bucks for three months, and we have a recycling can that waste management makes tons of money on, and we have our garbage can. There's a problem there. We're not in the sticker thing. You might as well just toss that in the wind. But that's with waste management. Hopefully with everything else, like we've hear, or I've heard over the last nine months, oh, yeah, we need to get right on this. We need to get right on this. Everything from the flooding, waste management, cab meetings, everything else, we're all waiting for that answer. You know? Mr. Harton, Mr. Lucy, you guys come up with some pretty good ideas sometimes, but that's as far as it goes. We don't hear it come back up on the agenda like you guys ask. I mean, it's near future. To me, a near future is three to four months. I don't know. Maybe your near future is a little bit longer. We need the sheriffs out there. We need to get more patrols out in the North Valleys. It's either that or come up with a temporary solution to stop the idiots going down my street at 60 goddamn miles an hour. Temporary speed bumps, they're rubber. You screw them into asphalt, they can be removed. You got to slow them down somehow. And just like I said last time, you have police presence, you have less crime, you have less speeding, just like when the dead body was found. We had sheriffs out there. Guess what? Everybody went sanely around them, the speed limit. Soon as I got away from them, zoom. And this started at 6 o'clock in the morning till 1 o'clock in the afternoon. Something has to be done. I wish you guys would actually tell us or inform us that something will be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleas. Next, I have Mrs. Karen Bowers.
Oh, there you go. Have a couple of issues with, I live in St. James Village, and I have a couple of issues with waste management. Not so much their inability to take care of things, but the connection between the Commissioner, St. James Management Company, E.B. Berger, and waste management. I have asked for the past five and a half years that we do have bears, we have excessive bears, that we actually were able to put our garbage into bear confinement containers. E.B. Berger has blamed waste management for not having the ability to put them in. Waste management, of course, has been willing to put them in, but then now E.B. Berger is blaming you, the Commissioners, stating that this is not something that's been approved for the county. I'd like that be addressed. Right now, we do have to recycle containers, we do have the large containers, but as the winter months set in again and the waste management trucks are not able to come into the neighborhood and collect the garbage, the garbage doesn't get collected. We then haul the garbage back into our homes, into the garages and confined areas, and wait the next day. They'll give us notice. Please put it out again. And this has gone on every winter, particularly during the months of January and February. We don't have consistent pickup. I would love to see at least the bear huts put in so that the garbage can be hauled to the street once, and then when the trucks are able to come and make the pickup, then they're able to get into the huts and collect it rather than making the residents pull the garbage cans in and out, out after 6:00 a.m. in the morning and must be returned back to the homes by 6:00 p.m. at night. I don't know about most, but I do have several neighbors. Our work schedules are not normal. We do tend to work overnight shifts, and because of that, we get home at 3:00 a.m. in the morning. We'd like to go to bed before 6:00 a.m., and to ask us to put our garbage cans out after 6:00 a.m. and then bring them back in before 6:00 p.m. is a little bit difficult in order to manage with the pickup schedules. Again, that would be eliminated by having the confinement huts. I hope that something can be done with waste management and the approval of getting those huts up in those bear areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. All right. Seeing we have no further public comment, bring her back to the board. We are on to item 22, Commissioners and Managers' Announcements. I'm going to, before Ms. Bowers, before you leave, I'm going to start off and then address maybe some things that you brought up just recently in your public comment. As your Commissioner for District 2, waste management, we did discuss with waste management a number of options in regards to bear-proof containers, wildlife containers. There was part of our service, there are wildlife, locking wildlife carts that are available to you, if you can get. I have staff, there's staff right there and behind you. Her name is Sarah Tone. She can talk to you about that. If there are discussions about, and I can't get into too much detail about it, but ...
I'm sorry. They've been declined by ...
Yeah, I can't talk to you about it right now, but my staff can kind of fill you in with that. But if the HOA is declining those, that is not a county issue, that's an HOA issue. And so she'll clear, Sarah Tone is right, standing right there behind you.
She'll ...
She will be able to fill you in and inform you and all that information, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Any other comments or Commissioner Harton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I wanted to just briefly touch back on cabs. When staff brings it back, I started giving this, you know, some thought about breaking cabs down into sort of categories. And really, when you look at what's at a cab meeting, you find that you have developmental issues, you have code enforcement issues, you have community service issues such as library parks, roads, snow plowing, et cetera. You have police, you have fire, and then you have Commissioner comments. Those are, that's really the consolidated nature of a cab meeting. And so the idea here potentially is maybe we schedule times where police and fire have their own ability to go out and have a conversation and talk just about those issues, because one of the complaints that I've received is we don't have a deputy and we're not talking long enough about some of the things that we're seeing. So I think that that may be a part of the conversation that would be important to have. Mr. Cleas brought up a very good idea with respect to temporary speed bumps. I'd like staff to bring back this concept of putting temporary speed bumps, especially in certain places. I have an issue on Silent Sparrow where people are using it as a workaround, and so maybe temporary speed bumps are a way that we can deal with that, and if we have sort of a cache of those, that we can go out and put them in the neighborhoods and, you know, try to slow things down. I'd like to hear staff's ideas on that. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Anything further from any of the Commissioners? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned.